Good evening. We're ready to begin. This Planning Commission meeting is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and our closed caption for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink can view this program in high definition on channel 1002. Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the law. And to the public. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Schlatman.
Present.
Vice Chair Cherry.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Creer.
Here.
Commissioner Toussaint.
Here.
Commissioner Roush.
Present.
Commissioner DeSalvio.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of our agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules of conduct so we could have a smooth meeting. And just to let everybody know that's new, we have a, the agendas posted on both of the half-walls on each side of the dais. So, moving on to public comment. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion as well as amount of any time any speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made on this item for specific action items will be cross-referenced to those items. Are there any members of the public that would wish to be heard under this portion of the agenda? Please come forward. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment portion and move on to item number five. Item number five, for possible action to approve the final minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of November 14th, 2017. And I'm sorry, this staff request this to be held in abeyance until January 9th, 2018. So we'll hear this at the next Planning Commission hearing.
Through the chair, I'll make a motion to obey the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of November 14th, 2017 to January 9th, 2018.
Here's a motion to obey the meeting minutes from January 9th to November 14th. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Moving on to item six, for possible action, any items from the Planning Commission staff and/or the applicant that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Are there any members of the public that would like to be heard?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We've got, the applicant has requested an abeyance for item 27 to the January 9th Planning Commission meeting. We've got an applicant request for abeyance for item 31 to the February 13th Planning Commission meeting. The applicant is requesting a withdrawal without prejudice for item 33. An applicant requested that we obey items 57 through 59 to the January 9th Planning Commission meeting. The applicant for items 61 to 63 also requested an abeyance to January 9th. And then staff has requested an abeyance for item number 66 to the January 9th Planning Commission meeting to allow more time to work with the development community.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Anyone wanting to be heard on any of these items, please come forward. And we have three microphones, so anybody that wants to be heard, please come forward and stand at one of the microphones. Good evening, sir.
Hi, yes, my name's Ron McNeely, and I'm here about number 27. This has been going on since September. Every month, they get an abeyance to come back again, so it's been four months now. And it's getting worse, the situation there. And, you know, all of us bought in this neighborhood because it's a residential neighborhood. Lot of families, all nationalities, everything in there, not to have a literal motel opened there, and that's what's happening. There's new cars there, new people, every single week, two and three different times a week. The neighbors are worried about who's there. You know, they're not vetting these people to know what kind of people are coming into our neighborhood and staying in this house. There's a lot of stuff going on. They've got trees at this house that in the last windstorm were blown down in September, still laying across the yards. The fire hydrant, you can't get to because the weeds have grown all around the fire hydrants. They're not taking care of the property at all.
Commissioner, or Jim? Yes. If this gentleman, if, I don't know if the applicant's here to address these issues, but this is one of the ones that was asked to be obeyed. If you'd like to obey it or maybe hold it until you hear the other housekeeping items or? Kind of going through the merits of the actual case. I appreciate that. So, I'd like to ask, would you like to have those comments just put on the record? And whenever this item comes forward next month, then we can just go ahead and have those items put into the record?
So it takes five months still? I mean, and it's just for a rental? I mean, I don't?
Certain times, particular items do get held for various reasons, so, I mean, if you'd like, we could just go ahead and include those items into the record, and we'll have those items to review before the next Planning Commission hearing. I'm not sure of the particular applicants here tonight, so I don't know if it's, you know? Oh, and the particular applicants out in town right now, so therefore it's hard for us to hear from the applicant and also hear from the community. And sorry you had to come down, but at least at the beginning of the night?
Well, he's been out of town all four meetings, all four months. He's been out of the meetings.
I understand.
Refuses to come, but we seem to see him at the house all the time.
Mr. Lowenstein, Director Lowenstein, could you tell me how many times this particular item has been held in abeyance?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. First meeting in September, it was held in abeyance to October, and from the October meeting, it was held to this meeting. This is the third abeyance request, so the Planning Commission actually has to make a finding of cause for the abeyance.
Okay, so I think the finding of cause would be, the applicant would be, would be out in town, submit it like paperwork to us prior to, prior to this hearing. Fortunately, this gets heard at the very beginning of the meeting. All abeyance items get heard in the very beginning of the meeting, so you don't have to wait until midnight or 2:00 in the morning. So, thank you for coming down. I apologize you had to come down for this. We did notice this on the website, so, but the, at the next hearing, it will be one of the first things that's heard, so you won't have to stay here very long.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming down.
He's not gonna get another abeyance next month?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Would it be correct in saying that there wouldn't be another abeyance that will be heard at the next meeting, the guy shows up or not?
Unless there's just cause, and there has to be, there has to be cause.
Okay, well, let's just say there's not just cause, we'll hear it next month.
I would agree with that.
Okay. So, rain or shine, next month's it.
Thank you very much.
So thank you for coming down, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, my name's Mario Alfonsi. I am the owner of 4024 Paul Robert's Court. I want to clarify, item 33, he's withdrawn it, and that's without prejudice, so he can reenter it at a future date?
That is correct, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Well, several residents of Paul Robert's Court are here, and we want to strongly object to it if it's brought up again. Number one, they said they sent out cards to all the residents. I myself and several other residents never received the cards. You know, luckily, one neighbor was on it, so the rest of us got word on this.
There's different, you know, distances that we, that the city sends out cards to, and you might, might have been out outside of that, that radius.
Yeah, I'm actually on the street. My whole street is smaller than that.
You could, you could call the city and talk to them about that if that's the case, but this is being withdrawn without prejudice, so it will not be going forward.
Okay, so if he brings it up in the future, we'll get notified again then?
Mr. Lowenstein, or Director Lowenstein?
That's correct. So if an application for this site comes in at any future point, once again, it would go to a public hearing with the notification, which is a thousand-foot radius around the subject site.
Okay. We'll within that then.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. May I ask this man a question that lives on Paul Robert's Court?
Yes, she may.
Sir, is it your feeling that the parties have, that the house is being rented now as a short-term rental? Is it yes or no answer?
We already found it on Airbnb. It's been rented, there's comments on it.
And do you in fact have evidence, pictures of such?
Yeah.
Okay. So your next, your next move, if you haven't already, is to, of course, pass those on to code enforcement, where there are plenty of right now. And then that way, when he does come, I'm worried he's not gonna come back because he's not, he's probably worried he's not gonna get it because of the neighborhood support.
Okay, yeah, it was brought up at the last Planning meeting, and apparently?
Yeah, I don't want to waste everybody's time. We got a bit busy night here tonight, but I will say this, tomorrow morning, I will call code enforcement, and I will ask them to please go out there, add a recommendation from me and the neighbors, so we can get him shut down without operating appropriately until he comes back. So, don't just let it go away because he doesn't have a license. Stay on it, stay diligent, and keep us informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down. And there is a way to go ahead and, and if you could come talk to one of our business licensing people, there is a way for everybody to go onto the City of Las Vegas, LasVegasNevada.gov, and, and report any kind of code enforcement issues electronically and anonymously, so nobody knows who's submitting that. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Susan Henry. I live at 3911 Mountain View Boulevard. This is Jennifer Courier at 4020 Paul Robert's.
Thank you.
And we are also here about the short-term rental that was on Paul Robert's that's been?
Is that item 33?
Yeah, so.
So that one's held within, or withdrawn without prejudice?
Okay.
So we're not gonna discuss that item tonight, but I appreciate you all coming up, and if it comes back forward?
Of course, we just wanted you to see the support that we have.
Please, please come back and, and give us your comments. Thank you.
Will it be recorded at all? I mean, do we need to, like, send any other comments to you?
It'll be in the meeting minutes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Larry Schultz-Marbella.
Can you turn, okay, never mind.
Larry Schultz-Marbella Community Association. I just wanted to clarify, is item 54 in abeyance, or is it gonna be discussed this evening?
Item 54 is not being requested to be held in abeyance, and so we'll be hearing that item tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no one else, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Actually, are there any other abeyance items that? Commissioner Creer?
No.
Commissioner Roush?
Yes, I would like to hold or obey items 39 through 47, given the duplicative nature of the requested tentative map and associated waivers and SDR, and the general plan amendment for this same property and items, which is on our January 9th agenda. And I'd like to hear these items at the same time as the GPA. I think they should be heard together. And coincidentally, this would also be heard after such time as the appeal that's set for City Council on January 3rd, and I think that's appropriate, that they all be heard in order.
And that would be items 39 through 47?
39 through 47, please.
All right, so in addition to the, the particular items that have already been submitted to the city planning department with letters asking for things to be withdrawn without prejudice or items to be held in abeyance, I might ask if anyone would like to come forward and discuss if items 39 through 47 should be held in abeyance, starting with Ms. Allen.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Frank Pancratz, on behalf of 180 Land. We absolutely would not be willing to?
And Frank, Frank's address is?
Sorry, Frank, go ahead.
Frank Pancratz, 9103 Alta Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we're not agreeable withholding this item. This evening, we'd like to have a public hearing on the items. We understand there is a GPA that's coming on a future agenda. That was submitted as part of the quarterly cycles that occur, and so it didn't fall in accordance with these applications, but you can absolutely hear these separately. I believe your staff and your city attorney would probably agree with me on that.
I guess the city attorney would agree that you don't, that the applicant does not have to agree with an abeyance, that you're able to either vote up or down the item or hold it in abeyance, as you've seen.
Thank you.
We would very much appreciate a public hearing tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Anyone else wanting to be heard on this particular abeyance item? And if I could ask you all to step back for a second?
Chairman, Commissioners George Garcia, 1055 Winter Palace Drive.
And this is just, Mr. Garcia, this is just based on whether it should be held in abeyance or not, and not the merits of the case?
Understood, and appreciate that. So it's very clear, and I think as the, as the Commissioner has identified from the Ward, that there has been a general plan amendment filed, which, the general plan amendment has to be in place. That's the normal procedure, you all understand it. And then that is followed by the tentative maps. Right now, it's the proverbial cart before the horse. So I think it's very clear that procedurally, I don't believe that there's any way you can actually hear this item, because you have to make a finding by statute, by ordinance, that the maps are consistent with the general plan. Absent the ability to make that finding, which won't be determined until after two things occur. The council makes a hearing on the appeal for the general plan amendment and the major mod. Secondly, that the applicant's general plan amendment can be heard in January. So until those occurs, the necessary predicate is not there for these maps to proceed. And with that, we, we believe it's merely a procedural matter at the discretion of Planning Commission to absolutely hold these. I don't think you have a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Seeing, Ms. Allen, did you have another comment to make?
If we may, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, the city had asked us to submit the GPA, and it was not required. We did so at the request of the city, because we understand that there is always a preference to have the GPA match the zoning on the property, but it is not required. In fact, that was submitted under protest. Had we not submitted that, we wouldn't even be having this discussion today. So, this is another attempt to delay us. They've continually delayed us over the last two years. It's the same story every time we're up here, there's just a different issue to delay us every time we have an application. So we'd appreciate a hearing and an up or down vote today, whatever that vote may be.
Thank you. Commissioner Roush, do you have any additional questions?
The main reason that I was asking for the abeyance is to not only give us more time to make sure that we understand the applications in their totality, but also because every time we hear these items, it's usually about a three to four hour hearing, and I'm trying to spare everybody the aggravation and the duplicative nature of doing this twice. If we hear it 30 days from now, then we can do it all at once, and I think it's more appropriate at that time.
Thank you. Mr. Shrek?
Yes, just very briefly, Mr. Chairman. Frank Shrek, 9824 Winter Palace. I filed the appeal of the Director's decision not to require a general plan amendment. The general plan amendment's been required by the city planning staff on almost every single application that's been filed, as recently as a report from the planning department on a similar application in February 14th, 2017 of this year. It said that the golf course is a PROS, and you have to have a general plan amendment before you can put any residential on it, which is the purpose of these maps, and therefore, until there's a general plan amendment decision made by the city council, as Mr. Garcia said, you can't go forward and put residences on a PROS, which requires a general plan amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Shrek. Good evening, or, oh, I'm sorry. We're not gonna keep going back and forth on this, so we basically have the housekeeping items, and I think everything is pretty much straightforward, with the exception of items number 39 through 47, which that might be, have a different vote. So maybe we could have a, have a motion on the particular housekeeping items that were on the agenda, and then we can make a motion on items 39 through 47.
Through the chair, on the housekeeping items, motions for item number 27 to be held in abeyance until the January 9th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 31 to be held in abeyance to the February 13th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 33 to be withdrawn without prejudice. Items number 57, 58, and 59, 61, 62, 63, and 66 to be held into, held in abeyance until the January 9th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. That motion carries. Commissioner Cherry, Vice Chair Cherry, can I have a motion on items number 39 through 47?
Yes, through the chair, if I may, to the city attorney, as I will have to be abstaining. If the application is heard, I will still be able to vote on an abstention. Is that correct?
You will, Chairman, Vice Chair. If it's a non-substantive motion, you can vote on that. If it's an abeyance or a striking, you can vote on that, but if it comes back, you could not vote on whether it's approved or denied.
Thank you. With that, items?
But you'll also, you'll need to make your disclosure on the record now for that.
Record now?
Yes.
Still for disclosure, I will be abstaining for, from item numbers 39 through 47. When heard, being newly engaged, my future father-in-law lives at Queens Ridge, and so I will be abstaining. With that, motion for items number 39 through 47, a motion to obey until January 19th, January 9th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Debate's January 9th, 2017. Please cast your votes. And please post. That motion carries. All right, moving, moving on to consent items. Item number seven, TMP 71986. Applicant, Woodside Homes of Nevada LLC. Owner, Howard Uses Company LLC. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for 151-lot single-family residential subdivision at Northwest Corner Crossbridge Drive and Sun Creek Drive, Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. And item number eight, TMP 71989. Applicant owner, Woodside Homes of Nevada LLC. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed 61-lot, single-family residential subdivision on the west side of Desert Foothills Drive, North Antelope Bridge Drive, Ward 2, Soroka. Staff recommends approval. Can we have a motion, please? Commissioner, Vice Chair Cherry?
Pardon me. On motions, items number seven, TMP 71986, a motion for approval. Item number eight, TMP 71989, motion for approval.
Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, both of those actions are final action unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to one motion, one vote, the following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number nine, ZON 71646. Applicant owner, 2945 Investment Company LLC at all. For possible action on a request for rezoning from RE Residential Estates and C1 Limited Commercial to C1 Limited Commercial at the southeast corner of Charleston Boulevard and Arville Street, Ward 1, Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. Item number 10, TMP 71647. Applicant owner, 2945 Investment Company LLC at all. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a one-lot commercial subdivision, Ward 1, Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. Item number 11, FCD 71956. Applicant, Ben Cornwall, owner, DAW Family Trust. For possible action on a request for a major deviation to Summerland Development Standards to allow two guesthouse casitas with more than one room, a bathroom, and a walk-in closet and more than one stove at the northeast corner of Trophy Hills Drive and Pine Island Court, Ward 2. Staff recommends approval. Item number 12, waiver 71955. Applicant owner, Equity Link Properties LLC. For possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no external or internal streetlights on a private street where such is required for a four-lot residential subdivision on the southeast corner of Rosado Way and Jones Boulevard, Ward 6. Fiore. Staff recommends approval. Item 13, please, no, no, no comments from? Sir, I'm, I'm just gonna go ahead and say, there, they will be a public comment after I end up reading all the items into the one motion, one vote items, which go to item 26, then I'll, I'll open this up, up for public discussion. At that point, you can come up and speak in a microphone where we can hear you. Thank you. So I think I was on item number 13. VAR 71954. For possible action on a request for variance from the complete street standards to allow no amenity zones, including no landscape buffers, no sidewalks, no curbs, gutters, where such are required on Jones Boulevard, to allow no off-site improvements on Rosado Way, where such are required, to allow private streets not to be developed to public street standards, including no sidewalks where such is required, and to allow a private street with no gate where such is required on a four-lot residential subdivision, Ward 6. Staff recommends approval. Item 14, WVR 71999. Applicant, Summit Homes of Nevada LLC. Owner, Clark County Investors LLC. For possible action on a request for a waiver to allow no internal or external streetlights where such is required at the southeast corner of Craig Road and Raleigh Street, Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Item 15, VAR 71998. For possible action on a request for a variance from the complete street standards to allow no amenity zones, including no landscape buffers, no sidewalks, no curbs, or gutters, where such are required, to allow a private street not to be developed to public street standards where such is required, to allow a private street with no gate where such is required, and to allow a 37-foot-wide street where 47 feet is required. Staff recommends approval. Item 16, VAC 72000. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate a U.S. government patent easement, Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. And relating items, 17, TMP 72001. For possible action on a request for a tentative map for a proposed four-lot, single-family residential subdivision, Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Item 18, SUP 72002. Applicant, Andrew Madlora and Christopher Gadula. Owner, Aphreat Investments, Inc. And, sorry, I probably just butchered every one of your names. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 9,300 square-foot tavern limited establishment use with 3,300 square feet of outdoor patio area at 918 South Main Street, Suite B, Ward 3, Coffin. Item 19, SUP 72003. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 12,600 square-foot nightclub use. Staff recommends approval. Item 20, SUP 71932. Applicant, beloved family tattoo. Owner, Cheyanne Capital LLC at all. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a tattoo parlor, Body Pearson Studio at 4343 North Rancho Drive, Suite 210, Ward 4. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-one, S U P seven-one-nine-four-five. Applicant, Ben seven-oh-two-two LLC. Owner, North Fourth Street LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed two thousand seven hundred and forty-three square-foot tavern limited use with six hundred square-foot and outdoor patio area at one-one-seven and one-one-nine North Fourth Street, Ward Five, Barlow. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-two, S U P seven-one-nine-nine-three. Applicant, Charleston Antique Mall. Owner, Charleston Heights Shopping Center LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-six square-foot second-hand dealer use at five-sixty South Decatur Boulevard, Ward One. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-three, S U P seven-one-nine-nine-seven. Applicant, Revolt Tattoos Meadows LLC. Owner, G G P Meadows Mall LLC. For possible action on a request for a special use permit for a tattoo parlor, Body Pearson Studio use at four-three-zero-zero Meadows Lane, Suite, Suite Number two-three-one-zero, Ward One, Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-four is S N C seven-one-nine-six-four. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas. For possible action on a request for a street name change from Wing Street to Luke Werner Road between Silver Dollar Avenue and Sirius Avenue, Ward One, Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. Item twenty-five, S D R seven-one-nine-nine-four. Applicant, Chick-fil-A, Inc. Owner, Restaurant Row LLC. For possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed four thousand nine hundred and seventy-five square-foot restaurant with waivers to allow a three-foot perimeter landscape buffer along the north property line where fifteen feet is required, and to not orient, orient the, the building to the corner where such is required at one-nine-nine-one North Rainbow Road, Ward Five, Barlow. Staff recommends approval. And then finally, item number twenty-six, V A C seven-one-nine-nine-seven-four. Applicant owner, County of Clark. For possible action on a request for a petition to vacate public sewer easements at the northwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Shadow Lane. Staff recommends approval. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard on any of these items? Please come forward. And we have three microphones, so anybody else wishing to come forward, please come forward right now, and you will be heard. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Gary Delia, fifty-eight-hundred West Rosado Way.
Could you spell your last name for us, please?
D apostrophe, capital E, L I A.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Jim's supposed to be here.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I'm talking for our whole street. Jim Clickner, five-nine-two-five West Rosado Way. Thank you for hearing me. We would like to have the improvements done.
Which item is this, sir?
Twelve and thirteen.
Okay.
Because everybody else has had to adhere to it. It's just a matter of time that.
So is this one of the items that you'd like to have pulled off of the one motion, one vote? And we'll, we'll have a public hearing on this item?
Yeah, have both, both twelve and thirteen taken on.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Jeff Wrightson, and I'm asking about the application for Pine Island Court in Trophy Hills.
Do you know which item?
I do. Seven-one-nine-five-six is the S C D number. I didn't have an agenda.
That's item number eleven. You want that pulled off so you could talk about it?
Yes.
Okay, we'll pull item number eleven. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, turn this over to the Plin Commission. Or to the Vice Chair for discussion, possible action.
Through the chair, I'd like to disclose on items number eighteen and nineteen, I live within disclosure. The notification area won't be affecting my judgment and ability to vote, so I will be voting on it.
And before you make that motion, I wanted to say that I'm gonna be abstaining on eighteen and nineteen as I own Urban Lounge within notification area. And item number twenty-one are very good friends of mine. And also, Mr. Dave Mason owns the building, and I've done work with him in the past. So I don't think that it's appropriate that, that I would vote on that particular matter. And so considering that, I'd like to go ahead and get a, get a motion.
Commissioner Roush would.
I have the same issue with Mr. Mason on the same item. He's a former and current business partner in a couple of properties, so I will be abstaining on that item.
That would be item number twenty-one, the Commissioner Roush would be abstaining on.
Yes.
Through the chair, items number nine, ten, fourteen through twenty-six, we'll have a motion for approval noting the chairman's abstentions of eighteen, nineteen and twenty, and Commissioner Roush's abstention of twenty-one.
My, my abstention of eighteen, nineteen and twenty-one.
Twenty-one, correct.
Okay. And Commissioner Roush's abstention, twenty-one.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Have motions on the floor. Please cast your vote. And please post. That motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items nine, ten, fourteen through seventeen and twenty-four will move forward to the January seventeenth, two thousand eighteen City Council meeting. Items eighteen through twenty-three, twenty-five and twenty-six are final action unless appealed to the city clerk within ten days.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, which was pulled from the agenda. I'm gonna, it's already written to the record, so I'm gonna go ahead and ask staff for a staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting a deviation of the Summerland Development Standards regarding a guest house casita to allow more than one room, a bathroom and a walk-in closet. The applicant is merging multiple properties into a single residential lot with the intent to keep the existing structures for supporting functions rather than combining them into a single residence. The Tournament Hills Architectural Review Committee has approved the plans and expressed their desire to keep the structures separate so that the residential integrity of the neighborhood is maintained. Staff is recommending approval. Please note that there is an additional letter of support since publication.
Thank you. This applicant here, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Ben Cornwall, Ben Cornwall, fifty-twenty East, Cartier, Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
No, we want it, so.
Okay, you want it. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and open this, this one. Notice says public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Sir, if I could ask you to see, sit in the front, front row. Good evening.
Jeff Wrightson, again, eleven-oh-nine Pine Island Court, Las Vegas. So this development is in Tournament Hills, which is really one of the most prestigious single-family communities in, in the city. And I've lived on this street while we allowed the development of a fifty-five thousand square-foot house up the street from me. And now our Architectural Review Committee, with really no real communication to the residents, has approved this. And this development here is the representative, but not the homeowner. And, you know, the, the problem we have with this is there are three homes there. And maybe if I understood the plan better as to what was going on, these homes range from about forty-five hundred square feet up to seven thousand square feet. And maybe, I don't understand if they're supposed to be called casitas now, or if there's additional construction.
Sir, if you could just keep your comments directed at me, I'd appreciate it.
Well, I don't understand if there's additional construction that's going on with these three large homes. There's already been one other custom home that was fifty-eight hundred square feet that was torn down to accommodate this large project, that, again, in our community is really supposed to be a single-family dwelling. So the issues that it raised to me is I've seen what happened with this other development with service staff, guards, visitors, and the stress that that puts on our gate, the security in the community. And I just don't think it's an appropriate development for this particular.
Did you have a chance to read the staff report on how one was gonna be, you know, a gym or, you know, different amenities?
This is kind of new to me. I mean, I got the notice last week that it was gonna be held, and so it was.
So on, on the city's website, they have all the backup on what their justification letter and staff report on what they're planning on doing in each of the residences. It's not gonna be multiple residences. It, it's one residence with multiple amenities and so on and so forth.
Well, there, there's three large custom homes.
Yes.
Are those the casitas?
Director Wallenstein?
So there's, if I'm not mistaken, there's composed of four lots, and the intent is to combine them all into one lot, have one primary dwelling, and all the other dwellings that are existing become accessory to that primary. Their accessory uses, changing to a garage, two guest house casitas, so using them for guests only. And then I believe there's other accessory structures, like the cabana, the poolhouse, gazebo. Staff, if I'm missing anything, fill in the blanks. But basically, those other dwellings become accessory to the primary dwelling, and they're no longer primary residences. So you would only have guests being able to stay there.
So they're basically guest houses, then, that people can stay for an undetermined period of time, or?
We're not talking about short-term rentals here. We're talking about people that, that, that know the actual resident.
Well, they may know the resident, but it, it opens all kinds of logistical problems for those people coming in through the gate because of jurisdiction and how you regulate those people because they don't really live there.
Thank you. Well, I, I appreciate you coming up. If you have any other comments, let me know. If not, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing.
All right.
Thank you, uh, thank you for coming out tonight. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing, turn it over to Plin Commission for discussion, possible action. And I'm gonna go ahead and start with Commissioner Roush.
Thank you, Chairman. I, first of all, want to start with a disclosure. I live in this neighborhood. So I've talked to the city attorney, and we've decided that the outcome of this decision doesn't really affect me one way or the other. I, I live pretty far away from the property, but I have lived in the neighborhood a long time. So I've lived there to witness some of the things that Dr. Wrightson is speaking of, so very familiar with the congestion at the gate that happened during the construction of the, the very large home down the street from you. Rather not identify the occupant. But I will say that this home has been under construction for quite a while now already. I was curious when I saw the application, so I have met with the applicant, and I understand what's happening now. They simply need to do a reversionary map because there really is no provision for this type of activity. If you buy several houses adjacent to each other, the city doesn't have a, and the Summerland Plan doesn't have a designation for how you classify those homes if they're under one ownership and, and one use. One of the things that I found out in talking with the neighborhood and the association was that actually they were pleased that these homes were remaining detached and single-family in nature as opposed to creating a large sixty thousand square-foot house, which we also have in the neighborhood. And that is really not compatible with the neighborhood. This feels much more residential in nature. The footprints are smaller, and the connectivity that he's created within his own site, I think, is very compatible. So I just, I, I wanted to find out more. I had concerns as well, like you, Dr. Wrightson. So that's what I was able to ascertain. And I think that if he wants to have, you know, four properties that he owns together and have the quiet enjoyment of that, it's not for us to say what someone does within the quiet enjoyment of the confines of their own property, I guess.
Thank you. Commissioner Creer?
Thank you, Chair. Through you. I don't have a problem with it. We have four lots that the applicant has purchased, and I don't think it's, well, I know for a fact that it's not our purview to decide who comes in and out of his home from a, from a personal standpoint. It is not a short-term rental. A person has a right to have his friends over for as long as he wants to have his friends over. It seems, from what I've noticed from the drawings, all the architecture renditions, it seems like it's gonna be a very well-done home, that it's going to be classy, whether you want to call it a casita or what have you. I do agree with the director's assessment that there is a primary dwelling, and these are, and, these are ancillary dwellings, so I don't have a problem with it, and I'll definitely be voting in support of it.
Thank you. I, I really don't have a big issue with this because they could have left on four different lots and had four different, different houses. And, you know, if, if it ever turned into a short-term rental, I'm sure the doctor would, would, would turn them into code, code enforcement. But I don't think that's gonna happen here. I think, you know, if you're, I, I don't charge my friends to stay at my house. And if they bring their friends over and they stay in, in this compound, then, you know, it, it, there's no difference in between it being four separate parcels or one parcel. That's just my personal opinion. But I don't think this is turning into a short-term rental or anything of the sort. So I appreciate everybody's comments, and I appreciate, you know, Commissioner Roush and Commissioner Creer, like, giving their comments. So if there's no other comments, I'd like to go ahead and ask for a motion. Commissioner Roush?
I'd like to make a, a motion to approve S C D seven-one-nine-five-six.
Thank you. Have motions on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that action is final action unless appealed to the city clerk within ten days.
Thank you. Moving on to items twelve and thirteen, as previously written to the record. Could we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, these requests were previously approved by the City Council on seven fifteen, two thousand fifteen, but subsequently expired. The requests are consistent with other similar four-lot residential developments, and staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. David Dwyer, Dwyer Engineering, seventy-three-ten Smoke Ranch Road, Suite E, Las Vegas, eight-nine-one-two-eight. Now you have the drawings in front of us. Yes, this was previously approved, and due to the slowdown, the final map did not record, get recorded before the plans were, before the, the, the conditions here expired. So we have resubmitted for those. Basically, or exactly, it's exactly the same product that was approved two years ago. There are some waivers and exceptions here. Jones is fully constructed at this time, so there's a waiver in there not to reconstruct the curb gutter sidewalk and streetlights that are on Jones. And the area on Rosada is, shall I say, it's very rural. It's horse property in that area. We had previously met with the owner next door and had a previous party, and not a party, but a get-together with what we wanted to do there. The decision was made not to put sidewalk on the south side of Rosada, just as it was not on the north side. It's a four-lot parcel map. Decision to not gate it was because gates are not, really, they may be ordinance, but it's not very practical on a four-lot parcel map, and we did not wish to have them there. And so we were going to meet with the private street, not to be a public street. It would be a private street. And that pretty much sums up the thing. It's exactly the same product that we had approved and had at the mile-hour stage before the economy stopped. So far, we couldn't finish it.
All right, thank you. This was, notice says public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Jim Clickner, five-nine-two-five Rosado Way. I am speaking for the residents on Rosada, so we don't have six, eight people up here. Since this was all done previously, times have changed. Properties have changed. And if we put in these variances and everything now, these other developments, we'll just go back and say, okay, you approved that for the variances. We don't have to do this. We don't have to do that. These people that have bought this large parcel of property, they're five acres, could walk, you know, without having to do the improvements. And we have all talked about it. And we have all talked about it, and we decided that we want the improvements. Jones has two driveway entrances into there. It's not, it's developed that way, but if the houses go in, what's going to do with the curb and gutter?
Can I ask the engineer or record to go sit in the front row?
Pardon?
Mr. Dwyer. I don't need y'all talking to each other. You need to be speaking directly to me.
Oh, no problem.
Continue.
And it's just mainly that what is required, we'd like to have done.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate you coming out tonight.
No problem.
Any final comments?
No.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this back over to the applicant. I'll give you thirds and seconds for rebuttal.
Okay. First one is the answer. We are to build, rebuild, the driveways on Jones will become curbs and gutters. I do believe that it is concurrent with the current property. I'm not aware of the other project that he is talking about, nor do I think it should have effect on ours. We will meet the standards put forward by the city, engineers, and the planning department.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible action, starting with Commissioner DeSalvio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, just so I'm clarified on it, because I'd never heard of a project priorly approved for this area, so you're saying that at one point in time, the waiver and the variance was granted previously for the exact same request of no streetlights, no curb and gutter in the interior private street as well as the exterior?
Yes, sir, that is correct. This is exactly the same map and exactly the same drawings that was approved two years ago.
Okay. And also, is it correct that now there, is the entrance going to be on Rosada Way for this four parcels?
This is correct. The entrance will be on Rosada Way. There will be no entrance on Jones, and any curb, gutter, or sidewalk which is deficient on Jones will be replaced as part of this project.
Okay. I know in Ward 6, we try to keep the areas as rural as possible, and it's been, it's been past practice for a long time, even when Ross was there, and to try to keep as much as the light pollution as possible from occurring. I have to, and I, that's why people move out there, so, I mean, the lighting issue, I haven't heard anybody come before me and ask about this problem. Now is the first time I'm hearing about it, to be honest with you. I've heard support of no street lighting and no curb and gutter, and keep it as rural as possible with horse trails and everything else, but nothing to the point where it's to be built out with sidewalks, curbs, gutter, and all that. So, it's my goal to keep this area as rural as possible. So, unless the commission has anything else, I'm ready to make a motion.
I might. Give me one second. Okay, never mind. I read the conditions, and it seems like the conditions of approval that were set in place years ago still protect the city, so please do go ahead and make your motion, Commissioner DeSalvio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion for approval on WVR 71955.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor. Please cast your vote. Please post. And that motion carries.
Also, would like to entertain a motion for item 13, VAR 71954, for approval.
Motion on the floor for VAR 71954. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, items 12 and 13 will go forward to the January 17, 2018 city council meeting.
Thank you. At this point, I am going to go ahead and move forward a portion of the director's business.
Yes, I am going to move forward a portion of the director's business, which is item number 68, DIR 72045, applicant owner, Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, for possible action on a presentation of the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada on board plan, all wards. Staff has no recommendation.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Raymond Hess. I'm Director of Planning Services at the RTC, and I'm here today to give you an update on a major initiative we have going on related to the future of transit for the valley. This initiative is called onboard. It's your future transit plan, and we take that "your future transit plan" part very seriously. We want to make sure that this plan really reflects the desires of the community, and so we're doing a lot of outreach to the community to make sure that we're headed in the right direction. So, I'm going to spend just a few minutes going over what that study will entail. One of the underlying reasons why we think this study is important is because there's expected to be a lot of growth in this valley. We're all familiar with how this region has experienced explosive growth over the years, and that growth is expected to continue. So, the map that you see before you shows where we have concentrations of either population and/or employment. Our base year is 2015, so what you see in red denotes the highest concentrations of employment and/or residents, and then blue is kind of the next order of magnitude down. But you'll see that a lot of that concentration of employment or jobs and where people live is kind of located in the central valley. Our study's going to go out to 2040, so if we project out to 2040, you'll see how that area has grown out to further in the perimeter from the downtown. So, we see a lot more red on the map, we see a lot more blue on the map, and this really represents underlying transit demand. Quite frankly, it represents underlying transportation demand, and so the need to get people to and from these locations for where they live, where they need to work, we believe is high, and therefore, we think transit can provide one of those mobility solutions for the valley. So, onboard actually is a three-legged stool. We have three approaches for part of this study. We're going to be focused on traditional transit or the existing bus route, fixed route system. We're also going to be looking at high-capacity transit options, and when I say "high-capacity transit options," I'm really talking about that next generation of transit, things like light rail, modern streetcar, bus rapid transit, transit that oftentimes operates in an exclusive right-of-way, is more reliable, more frequent, and faster service than what perhaps a bus can provide. And then the other thing we're looking at is we acknowledge that, or we know that the transportation sector is changing rapidly, and so we want to make sure that we're forward-looking, that we take into consideration as much of the new technologies that are out there so that our plan isn't obsolete the moment that we're done with it. So, just to go into those in a little bit more detail for each one of those, under traditional transit service, we're looking at our existing bus routes, our fixed route system, but we want to know, are there new areas that we can serve? Are there frequencies that can be added that can better service our residents? Can we provide faster service? And so, we're going to be looking at what improvements can be made to the existing bus routes, again, to serve the needs of our valley. When we talk about that next-generation transit, that high-capacity transit, we really want to understand what the best practices are. So, we're looking specifically at our inner mountain west peers, Phoenix, Denver, Salt Lake City. We're also looking at places that experience high visitorship, such as San Diego and Orlando as well, to see what they're doing in terms of moving people around in kind of this next-generation transit. We're also looking at high-capacity corridors, so which routes, which roads could best support, or which areas, quite frankly, could best support this next-generation transit? And then, the other thing that's really of interest, especially hopefully to many of you on this board, as well as those in the audience, is we're not looking at transit in isolation. We really want to make sure that we look at transportation in unison with land use, and so one of the things that our developer or our consultant is going to be looking at is the opportunities for transit-oriented development. The idea that you can have certain types of development that can support transit and vice versa, that transit can serve the mobility needs for people living in transit-oriented development communities and projects. And so, it's one of those things that we're really, we're working with your planning department on, we're working with public works departments on, to really make sure that we're advancing this, looking at land use as well as transportation. And then, for emerging transit technology, you know, we're going to kind of survey the landscape and see what's currently out there. What are some of the things that can affect transit demand in the future, either positively or negatively? You know, there are things, for example, we have a new app for the RTC that you can purchase your ticket, you can see real-time where the bus is, you can plan your trip all from an app, so that could enhance the transit experience. But then there are things that are, you know, new competition to transit, such as Uber and Lyft and even autonomous vehicles, for us to really understand what the future of transit is and how that might affect some of the demand on that transit. So, just to give you an idea of what this study, how long we expect it to take, it's a roughly 18-month to two-year study. We're just approaching the one-year mark on it. We expect to be done by next fall, like November of next year. We're roughly halfway through. We're, we started off with identifying kind of the purpose and need, kind of as I started off, that there's this need for transportation solutions looking into the future. We identified some alternatives. I think I'm going to show you a map of that in just a second, and right now, we're in the process, the very preliminary processes of analyzing those alternatives. Community engagement is one of the things that we really want to take seriously as part of this. We have a survey currently out on the streets, so for those of you that are interested in providing some input, right now, if you go to onboardsnv.com, you can fill out a survey. We have over 14,000 responses already, so we're pretty proud about how much the community has been giving us really valuable input. We have a series of public engagement efforts that we go out to the community. We're hitting about five different community events per week, roughly, is what we're averaging. And then, we have certain check-in points with our commission. We're coming to planning commissions such as yourselves, just to make sure that you're aware of this effort and you can be engaged in it. So, here's that map I promised you. We went out to the community, we said, which corridor should we analyze for consideration, and they pretty much told us all the corridors. So, it's an interesting starting point. We have a lot of work in front of us to actually go through and look at these roughly 40 to 50 corridors and identify which ones actually have the best potential for that next-generation transit. And for those that perhaps maybe can't make that cut, we can still look at, you know, fixed route, traditional bus service and/or transit solutions, emerging transit solutions as well. We're going to evaluate that map based on five different criteria, five different goals. Those are listed in front of you. So, we want to make transit more compelling, we want to improve regional connectivity, we want to encourage responsible development, we want to make Southern Nevada more competitive, and we wanted to develop sustainable solutions. Under each one of these goals, there are several objectives. Under each one of those objectives are several measurable outcomes that we're using data points to actually analyze all of those corridors that I just showed you on that map. So, it's very data-driven, but at the same time, it's also very mindful of the public comment that we're getting as well. So, where we're at, we're going to continue to get community engagement and reach out to the community throughout the entire process, and that community engagement's going to evolve over time. Probably in the new year, we're going to transition to the type of information we're requesting from the public that's more focused on what the priorities of transit should be looking forward. We had just started the evaluation of the corridors. We're going to be presenting those. We have the steering committee in January. And then, the other thing is we're wrapping up a peer city review that I mentioned earlier, Salt Lake City, Phoenix, Denver, San Diego, and Orlando. We're going to incorporate some of their best practices into our study as well. So, that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and there's that website that I mentioned earlier, onboardsnv.com. We'll be constantly uploading information to that, including documents that are developed, and you can also access any of the survey or public engagement opportunities as well.
Thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible action. Just a question, do you think that we'll actually achieve light rail in this town, and how many years do you think that would take? 20, 30, 40? Or do you think it's even closer?
Well, you know, that's a loaded question, I will say.
Yes, and we talked about a gondola system, too.
Yeah.
To connect the existing rail to possibly the airport into downtown.
Right.
And do you think that something like that might be able to happen?
Well, we are looking at all kinds of options, and so when we talk about light rail, one of the studies that we're currently evaluating right now is looking at Maryland Parkway. The environmental assessment right now is going on for that, that would connect, you know, from the airport through UNLV, through Sunrise Medical Boulevard Mall, all the way to downtown and the Las Vegas Medical District. And so, we anticipate to release that environmental assessment here shortly for public comment and review. You know, a lot of it has to do with, you know, how much community support can be garnered, how can we, you know, identify which funding sources are available? You know, as you can imagine, light rail and kind of these next-generation transit options can be expensive, and so we just need to kind of do our homework and our due diligence to make sure that we can, you know, fund these projects and sustain them into the future. And that's part of the thing that this study's going to help answer, is what are those costs going to be, what are some of the possible funding solutions, and what are the projected ridership that will come with each of those?
I think that's awesome. I think RTC is doing an amazing job, and you'll make a heck of a lot of money doing what y'all do, and you'll do it at efficient, I mean, efficiently and effectively so the average person can ride the transit system. But, you know, I know that we're a younger city, but you go to a lot of these older cities and you see these transit systems, and I'm not saying put in subways or this and that, but, you know, I think if we could have a light rail system like Dallas or San Francisco or LA or New York or any of these places where you can go from Henderson to Summerlin to downtown to Boulder City to, it would allow, you know, for a lot greater connectivity and the ability for people to work in other parts of the city. So, just encourage you to keep working on what you're doing and do the best that y'all can with the funds that y'all have, and keep improving our transportation system, which is very important to our city.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner DeSalvio?
The rail system, the light rail, is that going to be, and it works as an elevated one, or is that going to be street-level?
Great question. We're looking at it from a network perspective, so this study's not necessarily going to answer the questions about whether it'll be below ground, at-grade, or above ground. Really, that would be answered through, you know, when we take a certain corridor, for example, and then look at it in a little bit more detail through an alternatives analysis or then ultimately a design concept, is where some of those questions would be answered. Really, for this study, we want to look at it from a network perspective in terms of which areas would perform the best, where would you get the best ridership, where could you get the, you know, the best mobility options, and then those other considerations or more design considerations that'd be looked at in the future.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Jerry?
Through the chair. So, just so I'm clear, the Maryland corridor is separate from this or rolled up into this?
Yes, kind of both. So, Maryland Parkway has a bit of a head start, and so, forgive me for being somewhat facetious, but because Maryland Parkway's been looked at for quite some time, for example, Maryland Parkway was identified, the last time we did a major master transit plan was back in 2002, and Maryland Parkway was identified for kind of this next-generation transit. And so, we've been working over the last, you know, five years or more, trying to identify which alternative would be the best, and so this environmental analysis is one of those steps that's needed in order to get federal approval for the project. Whatever comes out of that process, whatever the public ultimately tells us they want, that will be reflected in this plan because it will be part of that network system, but because it has a bit of a head start on everything else, we kind of are deferring to what comes out of that process to what will be reflected in this plan.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Creer? No? Okay. Well, it looks like on this particular item here, staff has no recommendation, there's no action required. I greatly appreciate you coming out and spending hour and 14 minutes with us tonight.
No worries. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, sir. So, moving back to public hearing items, we're going to start with 28, 29, and 30. 28, abants GPA 67883, applicant owner Deborah J. Roach, Reoak, et al., for possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from DR Desert Rural Density Residential and R Rural Density Residential to SC Service Commercial on the east side of Rainbow Boulevard, north of Anne Road, Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. Item 29, abants ZON 67884, 67884, for possible action on a request for a rezon from RE Residential Estates to C1 Limited Commercial. Ward 6, staff recommends denial. Item number 30, abants SDR 68324, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 28,800-square-foot general retail store, unenlisted, with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer where eight feet is required along the east perimeter, Ward 6. Staff recommends denial. And I think on item number 30, there might be an adjustment to what was in the notes from 28,800 down to 25,000 or 26,000 square feet. Staff report...
thousand square feet. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed commercial development is directly adjacent to property designated rural neighborhood preservation, commonly known as RNP. These adjacent properties are also subject to the interlocal agreement reached between the city of Las Vegas and Clark County that prohibits these RNP properties from being developed into anything more intense than two dwellings units per acre. Also, this portion of Rainbow Boulevard is subject to the Rainbow Boulevard North Corridor Plan. This plan specifically recommends for the northern portion of Rainbow Boulevard to remain residential in nature and recommends for non-residential development to be limited to the Anne and Rainbow intersection and south thereof. In addition, the land uses permitted by right within the C-one Limited Commercial zoning district are too intense for residential adjacency and would not be able to be conducted in a manner that is compatible or harmonious with the existing RNP neighborhood. For these reasons, staff is recommending denial of all applications. Please note, an additional letter of support has been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Doug Rankin, ten fifty-five Whitney Ranch Road, on behalf of the applicants tonight. Let me orient you where we're at tonight. We're at Rainbow and Anne. These are the three parcels that have made an application for a change to the general plan. This site is located at Rainbow and Anne. Rainbow is a one-hundred-foot corridor and will remain such. The Rainbow Corridor Plan indicated so that it will remain a one-hundred-foot right-of-way. The zoning in the area, we have C-one adjacent to these residential, another C-one property adjacent to the residential here, and C-one at the corner. This would be a continuation of that C-one zoning down the hundred-foot right-of-way. As part of our process, we went out and reached out to the neighbors. We received support from a hundred and thirty-one households in the area to support the project. There's a demand for some neighborhood commercial in this area, and that's expressed by some of our neighbors. And we have some neighbors that are supporting the project that are here with us tonight. In addition to that, we have been working with the property owner adjacent to us who is C-one. He is here tonight with us. That's Mr. Tom Furman. We're looking at partnering with him to possibly do something so that we have a larger C-one parcel, so that it becomes easier to operate. And together, they can work together. As staff stated, we did make a revision to the plan. Originally, we had one single building user type. Working with the planning commissioner for Ward Six, Commissioner DeSalvio, we've worked to revise that. We've broken that up into smaller tenant space to accommodate that neighborhood commercial feel. In addition to that, the building itself sets back ninety-one feet approximately from our back property line. We've pulled it forward as part of the Rainbow Corridor Plan. Commercial is requested to have direct access to Rainbow. And we've provided units with direct access to Rainbow from there so that it becomes more walkable. We have a twenty-foot service drive for the well site here to act as a buffer to our neighbors to the east. That buffer is twenty feet to service the well. If this were to be approved, these three properties would come off the community well and the other properties would continue to utilize that well. We've landscaped the property to meet code. We, there is a waiver, since we can't put the landscaping in the alleyway here, we've moved the required landscaping back ten feet. And we're working with Commissioner DeSalvio. We're going to add some conditions of approval to increase that buffer. And those conditions are to add thirty-six inch box trees along this east roof property, an eight-foot wall along here to provide better buffer, and any signage on this east elevation will be backlit only. And in addition to that, if any changes are made to the plan, we've agreed to bring it back, any changes to the site plan as a public hearing. So that if anything changes here in the future, you'll get a chance to see it again. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. Like I said, we do have neighbors in support, the project that are here with us tonight, as is some of our clients. And once again, Mr. Furman is here to answer any questions, if you have any questions for him.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rankin. If I could ask, well, I would ask you to sit in front row, but it's almost all full. So if you can find a place to sit down for a second while everybody comes up here. Anyone, this was not a public hearing, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. If there's multiple people, we have three microphones. As soon as the last person stops speaking, I'm going to go ahead and cut off the public comment. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Jim Epley, fifty-six eighty-six North Rainbow Boulevard. I'm the owner of one of these parcels. I used to live in that home. I bought it before any of that C-one was commercial. It's already currently developed, which is the Walgreens that's currently there, before the streetlights actually went in, before it was a hundred-foot right-of-way. It was a residential area. Today, it's not. It's been paved, you know, it's a hundred-foot right-of-way. We moved out and we still live in Ward Six at sixty-seven seventeen Cambian Pine Avenue, which is residential. It's a gated community. I'm having a hard time keeping tenants in this house. I have no real other options with this. We've been going through this for a little over a year at this point. I remember talking to Commissioner Quinn last year, and we were talking about other options for this area as far as professional office, multiple tenant. And we talked about the professional office of what's occurred down Jones in ninety-five, that area down eastern. That's all went professional office many years ago. It just, it definitely doesn't suit this neighborhood. It never really develops consistently. And we've found something in working with Mr. Furman that we can work with, that the neighbors have signed on to. Like he said, we have a hundred and thirty-five homes, a hundred and seventy people in total are in support of this project. We have, you know, about a dozen people here that are in support of it. And it's, it's just not residential in nature anymore. It's, we have a one-acre property sitting there with an older house that's decaying, and we don't really have any tenants that want to live in, in that house. I don't, we don't have many other options for this particular property at this point with the other commercial and what has gone in around there already.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman. My name's Scott Srods, and I own Kinder Prep Academy on the west side of Rainbow, across from where they're looking at developing. And we have been kind of watching this area grow. It's got a, quite a mixture of businesses. We have two schools on our side of the road. We have Walgreens, you know, down the street from us. We see that they're putting something in finally on the corner to kind of finish that area off. We would welcome, we appreciate our neighbors across the street and their concerns. We've been great neighbors. But we also see that that corner, from the northeast corner of Anne and Rainbow up to where they are, has been a, it just needs help. It needs to, we need improvement. So we're supporting this project.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening, ma'am.
Jennifer Srods, fifty-six ninety-five North Rainbow Boulevard. Just wanted to say that we're, I'm here to support the project.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Good evening, Lisa Taylor. I'm at five-six-six-four North Rainbow. I'm also one of the applicants for this property. And as Mr. Epley said, this area, while part of it surrounding it is residential, this particular stretch is no longer residential. There's a Walgreens across the street from my house. There's two schools. There's a terrible Herbst going in on one corner, and I believe there is a restaurant going in on the other corner. So this will kind of finish up and make everything look very seamless as far as commercial. I think it'll increase the walkability in the area, which I think will actually improve the surrounding neighborhoods to have retail and restaurants nearby that people can walk to rather than have to get in their car and drive. I think this is a project that should be supported, and I think the owners have given a lot of concessions to help the area both improve with the businesses around it and to make it a nice seamless property for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Good evening.
Hi, Brian Poole. I live at six-two-zero-eight Red Pine Court. I live in Ward Six as well, and I support this project.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Reoak. I live at fifty-six forty North Rainbow Boulevard. The Rainbow and Anne Road area has ongoing commercial development already. My property is located next door to a commercial zone parcel. With all the progress of the future commercial development ongoing in that area, my property would be best used for commercial use on North Rainbow Boulevard. I ask the commissioners to please take into consideration with your vote for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Judith Donahue, fifty-seven fifteen Gilbert Lane. I've lived there for forty years. We built our house. We've built it for our retirement. We have many citrus, many fruit trees. We did not build it for commercial to come in behind us. There is nothing commercial there. That Walgreens went in many years ago when seven commissioners went to prison over it. So I don't think we ought to bring up Walgreens. And I think you should rethink when it's horse property and it's for people that have lived there a long time, not people that just want to get out with big money.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Epley. I live at sixty-seven seventeen Cambian Pine Avenue. I'm supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Juanita Merrill. I live at thirty-two sixty-three East Flamingo Road. I've known Mr. Epley, the owner's property on that side, for many years since 2013. I've seen projects that he's done that turned to gold, and I support the project.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening.
Hi, Doug Williams, six-nine-nine-four Motley Road. Longtime resident of Clark County since nineteen seventy-eight, when the edge of town used to be Rainbow and Charleston. I'm here to support the project.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for keeping, everybody keeping their comments short.
Adam Taylor, eight-three-zero-zero, Center Stage Avenue. I'm here to support the project.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, sir.
Keith Pearson, fifty-seven-ten North Rainbow. I'm right next to this property. I am opposed to the property being changed to C-one. We have gone through this for a long time. The, all three properties are, yeah, they are getting run down now. They've been let go. I'm against this. It's, everything that I've read that has been proposed and to stop this is accurate. It's residential property. I want to keep the rural feel. Don't want the lights, don't want the noise, don't want the traffic. We moved out there for that reason. I'd like to keep it that way.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening.
Hi. I'm Kitty Jensen at fifty-six thirty-one Gilbert Lane. We are on the east side, behind Rainbow, and we are against it.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
One more comment.
Your name and address, or your name again?
Fifty-seven-ten North Rainbow.
And your name?
Keith Pearson.
Okay.
Question is, what does abeyance mean?
Abeyance just means the city planning commission or city council does not want to hear a particular item on a particular night because there's additional, additional items that need to be worked out between the community and the developer. But this has been obeyed three times, and it might, might be due to city council wanting to work out, like certain items with, or city planning staff wanting to work out items and/or maybe the applicant wanting to add additional landscape and adjust their site plan. So, and abeyance just means we're holding it for thirty days or sixty days, but this has already been held three times. So without just cause, we can't hold this again.
Another question. Why were there no written notifications of this sent out?
Director Lowenstein, would you like to address that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. When these items are originally put forward on an agenda, they are noticed, publicly noticed in accordance with state statutes. We actually send out a thousand-foot radius from the property notification cards about the application. Those go out for the original application. If the items are held in abeyance to a future meeting, they are not re-noticed every time it's held in abeyance. The announcement is made at the meeting, and that serves as the public notice. So if the applicant or the planning commissioner or staff has requested the item to be held in abeyance at the meeting, they would give what date that future meeting would be at?
Okay. I never saw another notification. It was tabled.
There would have only been one notice, sir, that was sent out at the very beginning, and there wouldn't have been additional notices sent out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for coming up. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tom Furman, fifty-nine twenty South Rainbow Boulevard. I own the property on the corner, and I'm working with the homeowners there on a compatible development. Just so you know, we are very close to signing a deal with the Starbucks for the hard corner. So this would be probably a continuation, and we just want to be considerate to the neighbors and the homeowners that live around there, that we want a good project, that they're going to come and use the facilities and the tenants that are coming in, and we just want to be a good neighbor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to Mr. Rankin. If you need a minute for any rebuttal, I'll give you a, give you a minute.
I shouldn't need a minute. Once again, we've done what we could to buffer our neighbors to the east by providing that large setback of the building, pushing it all the way forward, providing thirty-six inch box trees, a large landscape buffer, and including the twenty-foot alleyway there. So we look to be good neighbors as, as we can be. So that's what we've done. So I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to ask a question before I turn this over to the planning commission. As far as behind this gentleman that came up here that lives behind this project and the project that you're presenting, you're saying you're putting thirty-six inch box trees, thirty-six inch box trees on, on, you know, how many, on center, twenty feet or twenty-five feet?
Yes, they're twenty feet on center as required by code.
Okay.
Along the back property line here.
Can we go to the overhead?
So that would be twenty, as you can see, we have them twenty feet on center here. And we've agreed to that to ensure they're twenty feet on center.
And Mr. Rankin, do you have a block wall that is along the back property line?
Correct. We have a block wall along the property line. That's currently conditioned to be six to eight feet wall, high wall, and we've agreed to an eight-foot wall along that area.
Do you have any lights facing the neighbor's property?
Pardon me?
Do you have any lights facing the neighbor's property?
You know, we haven't done a lighting plan yet, but by code, and we would agree to that, that all lighting will be shielded and directly upon the property. Our plan is to use low-level lighting to be sensitive to the neighbors to the east.
Okay. Thank you. And sir, if you have any questions, you could ask the staff, but I close the public hearing. But Mr. Swanson or Mr. Gebke, if you could address any of his questions. I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner DeSalvio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You took some of the guesswork out for me with the questions. But yes, since becoming planning commissioner, this has kind of been my pet peeve, that corner. I know there's been numerous meetings with the city councilwoman as well as myself going back and forth. And I'll be honest with you, today was the only day that I received opposition since July of working on this. And I know it's been going on since June. I've had four people call. One lives in Sacramento, the other three live, husband and wife, and then another gentleman that called at the end of the day. But I did sit down and I, you know, I spoke lengthily with them on the phone and asked them, you know, what would be a plan B? Because we've done everything we could to make it as harmonious and compatible to the community as possible. I don't live far from there myself, so I didn't want, and I saw a place in that corner anyway, just for personal preference. So, what we did is we, there were some conditions that were put down, but we kind of enhanced it. We took it from a six-foot, possible six to eight-foot, to make it an eight-foot wall, to go from twenty-four-inch box trees to thirty-six, to shade as much as possible the backyards of those that are pre-existing homes. We also made sure that the lighting on the building would be backlit, so you don't have a bright sign shining into your yard. We also came up with, and this was the last-minute thing that I talked to with the gentleman, because remember, I asked each and every person that opposed it today on the phone, give me your Plan B. What would you want if it moved forward? So, this way, at least you had skin in the game. And it was brought to my attention, and I thought it was a very good condition, where the operating hours can only be from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 at night. So, any business that is put in that location will only be allowed to operate from 7:00 to 11:00. So, that way, you don't have people in that community, you know, loitering or hanging out, because there's nothing to hang out for. So, I hope with the conditions that we put forward, you guys in the community could stand in support with me for this, because it would be my motion to move it forward.
Thank you. And for Deputy Fire Marshal David Klein, while you're looking at the map, if you could just, I mean, it looks like it's back towards the property line quite a bit. Well, actually, no, I apologize. It's not that close to the back property line. I was looking at this in reverse, so it doesn't look like you're gonna have a problem getting your trucks around there. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. We wouldn't be using the alleyway for emergency access, anyway.
Okay, thank you. And for Public Works, as far as the Rainbow, it looks like a couple of the lots north of this particular project, you know, the full street improvements aren't constructed. And I guess during a traffic impact analysis, after this is approved or denied, well, I mean, if it's denied, it's not gonna come to you, but if it does get approved tonight, that would be looked at, and they'd have to see if, you know, the rest of the street would have to be improved, or if it could handle the capacity due to the added traffic due to this particular commercial shopping center.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. It's the traffic that is required for this project. We also have a special condition. It's condition number seventeen that requires them to maintain the left access into Walgreens on the southern driveway. So, they're conditioned to do the full improvements, and where that one gentleman was here that's immediately adjacent to them, they'd probably have to have a paved transition where it goes from full improvement to back to the half improvement on the west side.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Rush?
I just wanted to say this item's been obeyed several times, and I've looked at it thoroughly, and I really feel that it is a harmonious and compatible use in the area, given the fact that Anne and Rainbow are both major thoroughfares. The commercial use, it's just, it's a given at that type of an intersection, although I know that there are members of the community that don't feel that way. There are some rural estates that are nearby, and that's always going to be a challenge up in Ward Six. So, I'm glad that Commissioner DeSalvio has been meeting with the neighborhood and meeting with the applicant to make sure that this is going to be a good development for the neighborhood. But I think it's absolutely the right use. It doesn't appear to be a high-intensity use, and I'm glad to hear that you're working with the neighbor on the corner. Maybe it all becomes one development at some point, but I think that it's inevitable that commercial's going to be on this corner, and so for those reasons, I'm going to be supporting you tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
I drove by the property. In fact, I went down at rush hour, because I wanted to see what the traffic was like, and it gets pretty heavy down there. And I do feel sorry for the homeowners that bought there a long time ago. I mean, as a little girl who grew up downtown, when you said Anne and Rainbow, I thought I had to bring my lunch, because it was like in another country. But I am going to support this project. I think it's the right project for this area, and you will have my support tonight. Thank you.
Vice Chair Cherry?
Through the chair. You know, I see these neighborhoods kind of driving around town off Russell, Maryland, where it's kind of gone downhill in some ways with the old homes that are on kind of major thoroughfares, and they're converted into offices, and it feels like it's just kind of a broken feel. And it's, we see them come before us for variances for parking and setbacks and all kinds of different things. So, seeing a project that's brought forward and so much support, and hearing what's happening with the councilwoman's office, I think these are all just positive things, and I will be supporting it.
Just one brief comment through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, friend. I just wanted to say to Commissioner DeSalvio, what a good job you did coming out of the chute and working, you know, you've only been here a few months, but working diligently with these neighbors to come to the terms with the more trees, the bigger trees, to block the back, the sound, the lights. My hat's off to you for coming in and working so hard with these neighbors. So, quick, job well done, sir. You'll have my support.
Thank you, Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner DeSalvio, can we get a motion, please? And...
And do you want me to read the conditions into the record?
None in GPA, but probably on the SDR. So, that would be item number thirty. So...
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion on item twenty-eight, GPA 67883. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Item number twenty-eight, please cast your vote. That motion carries. Commissioner DeSalvio, item twenty-nine?
Yes, please. Motion for approval on item twenty-nine ZON 67884.
Thank you. Motion for approval, please cast your vote. That motion carries. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Okay. A motion for approval with the following conditions on item number thirty, SDR 68324. Conditions as follow. East side signage shall be backlit, thirty-six-inch box trees on the east side property line, an eight-foot wall on the east property. Any changes made must, to this site plan, must be approved by the planning, any changes. Change landscape, change anything, must be approved by the planning again, or brought before the planning. And then any SUP or business licensing has to have the seven to eleven time on it.
Commissioner DeSalvio, thank you for your motion. If I could ask Director Lowenstein to please clarify the proposed conditions?
Oh, Chairman, I'll translate that into planar ease for the...
Okay, thank you. And pay attention, and let me know if you agree.
Added condition number one, thirty-six-inch box trees shall be planted into the eastern landscape buffer. Condition number two, an eight-foot block wall shall be required along the eastern portion of the site. Condition number three, signage on the east elevation shall be backlit only. Condition number four, any changes to the approved site plan shall require a public hearing at the planning commission. And condition number five, the hours of operation for all businesses shall be from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
And, Mr. Chairman, we agree to those conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner DeSalvio, do you agree?
I do. I thought that's what I said.
You did.
Yes.
That's exactly the way you mentioned it. So, as read into the record and clarified in plan language by Director Lowenstein, there's a motion on the vote for approval. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you for your time, and happy holidays to all.
Thank you. Director Lowenstein?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, those items, all three of them, will be going to the January seventeenth, 2018 city council meeting.
Thank you, sir. Moving past item thirty-one, which has been held in abeyance, and going to item thirty-two, abeyance, SUP 71656, applicant-owner Red Mocha LLC for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed short-term residential rental use at 2001 Grand Island Court, Ward One Tarkanian. Staff recommends approval. This is applicant here. A staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the subject's site is approximately eight-hundred-and-ten feet away from the nearest short-term residential rental, and has provided the required onsite parking as required by Title 1912. Staff is recommending approval of this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Who, oh, yes, Commissioner Quir.
Thank you. I'm not sure, but my brother lives on this street in, under a buttence of caution, plus the fact that there's only nine homes in this area, and I think that one of nine would, well, potentially influence the vote on this. I'm going to abstain from this item.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Ken Graham, 2001 Grand Island Court.
Kara McKee, 2001 Grand Island Court. This is a stunning home and one of the best short-term rentals in Las Vegas. It's in a small neighborhood with only nine homes. Each bedroom in the home highlights a different Vegas celebrity such as Sinatra, Elvis, and Celine Dion. This is a high-end, custom home, almost 7,000 square feet on a half-acre lot. It was completely remodeled in 2016. My partner Ken and I have invested 1.2 million dollars into the home and its furnishings. As you can see, this amazing home is like being in the Cosmopolitan or the Aria. We have more than fifty five-star reviews and have never received less than a five-star review. We have been recognized by Airbnb as super host for the last four quarters. There is an independent research provider for short-term rentals used by the city called AirDNA. They rank our property number two among 1,446 short-term rentals in Las Vegas. We target families and business groups. Many business groups enjoy relaxing in the common areas of our home after a long day at the convention center. This is a photo of our 1,000-square-foot Elvis suite. We meet or exceed industry's best practices for short-term rentals. We meet each group and review rules at check-in. Our quiet hours start at 8:00 p.m., three hours earlier than the city ordinance requires. Here's a photo of our signs in the home reminding guests of the rules. We require a phone number for all guests and visitors and send text messages before check-in to each of them with the rules. This is an aerial view of the home here. We have two cameras in front of the home, and one on the side that faces the neighbor's house and the street. Every time there's movement in front of the camera, we get notification on our phone and can view the footage. We have noise monitors in both the front and back of the home. If noise goes over the limit set, we receive a text, and because we have phone numbers for all guests, we can contact them at any time and to stop the issue immediately. We also have installed a device called the party squasher that monitors the number of cellphones in the home, so we can prevent parties. We can monitor all cameras and monitors anytime, from anywhere in the world, from our cellphones. We also have licensed security on call twenty-four hours a day through the Vegas Vacation Rental Association. If we're ever out of town, we have an employee on call twenty-four hours a day as well. I am personally the one that does the screening for the guests. I reject more groups than I accept. More than fifty wedding requests were denied in 2017. I don't allow groups under twenty-five years old. Our guests must acknowledge that they understand the rules. I ask open-ended questions about their stay, and I explain that we have cameras and noise monitors before they book, so they know they can't have parties and other disturbances. I also ask about the maximum number of vehicles and guests. We are an extremely professional operation and feel that we should give more than we take from our neighborhood. We have offered generous donations to our neighbors, such as buying a new gate for $13,000, because the gate and call box are so old that they don't work correctly. We've offered to pay more for the common area expenses. We've sent our handyman to help multiple neighbors. We volunteered to take care of the current gate and call box, and have paid out-of-pocket for all gate maintenance this year. We emphasize to our guests that no loud music can come from cars entering or exiting the neighborhood. Our policy for significant rule violations and disturbances are as follows. We would go to the home immediately and ask the guest to leave. We would, during their exit, we would have security on the premises and potentially have security stay overnight if necessary to make sure the area is secure. We would talk to each neighbor personally to see if they were affected, and see what we can do to prevent this from happening again. We would change the gate code, which this is something that we actually do regularly anyway, to prevent too many people from having the code. We have had one incident. We handled it professionally and quickly. We would be happy to describe it in detail if you would like. There is a very limited owners' association that handles the common area, but does not have any CCNRs or official rules governing the neighborhood or any of the homes. Because of this, we know that it's our responsibility to have very high standards. Based on the postcards and letters submitted, there have been many false claims made about us and the property. This is very, very hurtful to us, and we take our responsibilities very seriously. We're willing to be completely transparent and have already provided evidence in your packets regarding false claims, the packets that you've received today. There is also a petition that's been submitted opposing our permit that has fifty-six signatures. The ordinance requires notification of homes within 1,000 feet. Out of the fifty-six, only eight are within this range, and some are up to seven miles away. The petition is also invalid, as it makes false statements, saying that there was a party at the house and the police broke up a bachelor party, which never actually happened. Ken and I live in this home a quarter of the time, and the rest of the time, we live in another home in the area. Our family comes to visit and stay in the home with us. We love this home, and we purchased it so that we could use it as a short-term rental and a place for our family to stay when we're in town. The Celebrity Mansion is one of the finest short-term rentals in Vegas. We're outstanding hosts, we're professional, and we care about the community. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your vote.
Thank you. If this was known as a public hearing, anyone who wanted to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And considering there's quite a few people, I'm gonna ask everyone to keep their comments fairly short, and try not repeating everything that everybody else has said before you. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Dr. Robert Paz, 2912 Farrann Court. I'm speaking today on behalf of Ken Graham and Kara McKee regarding approval of a short-term vacation rental, special use permit of their home on Grand Island Court. My impression of the home is that it is stunning. It is spacious, very high-end, modern, and incredibly well-kept up. It has the appearance of a model home. They run the home with an amazing degree of efficiency and preparedness. It has been wisely decided that there is a place for short-term vacation rentals in Las Vegas. Las Vegas needs to maintain a robust infrastructure, and these rentals attract and provide a place for families to visit and enjoy the great amenities that Las Vegas offers, but in a more family-oriented setting. Ken and Kara have created a perfect home for this. I urge you to approve their special use permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for keeping your comments short. Good evening, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Kevin Christensen. I live at 2,000 Home View Court. I represent the Home Court Land Association, a number of whose members are here and would like to comment. I'd like to follow up their comments after they've completed. I would like to point out as well that we have video...
Well, we're either gonna talk right now, or we're not gonna talk twice. So, if you want to talk right now, or if you want to stop right now and come back up in a few minutes, you can.
If I want to stop now, I can come back in a few minutes. That's what you said, right?
That's what I'm saying. I don't want you to talk twice.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Julie Christensen, 2,000 Home View Court. Our cul-de-sac is directly across the opening of their cul-de-sac, and it is a residential half-acre community, custom homes. We built there twenty-nine years ago because we wanted a family neighborhood. We wanted it quiet. We could have built in a subdivision somewhere, but we wanted this community. It's very unique to Las Vegas. And what she's saying is not true, because I have video footage I would love to show you. They had a bachelor party. There were ten to twelve men. They were from Australia. They were zooming, they'd each rented a race car. They were all Lamborghinis. I can show you the footage. They were racing through our streets. They were running through stop signs. They were revving their engines so loud, everybody in the community was out watching it. So, we all walked over. We all called the police. Two police cars came to break it up. They said they were leaving. They were checking out the next day, so I don't think any charges were made. I haven't heard of anything. But this is not conducive to our neighborhood. Party homes, short-term rentals, we don't want them in our neighborhood. That's why we built where we did. We ask you to please protect our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'm Carlos Fabri. I live at 2,004 Grand Island Court. I purchased this home late July 2017, and I took my time for moving. During the month of August, I was watching extremely heavy traffic in the neighborhood. So, I was sure that there was something going wrong there. Back in September, that was the first, I was, I already moved to the home. There was a huge incident with luxury cars driving like crazy inside the neighborhood, which I don't believe that there were security cameras or nothing like that before, because we had to call the Metro Police Department, and they were waiting for the manager. And it took a couple of hours to solve the problem and to take the guests out from there, which this unfortunate incident took place early September, and it jeopardized the community's security, safety. I have, we set up a logbook with all the incidents, and this one precisely happened on the fifth of September. And we have many other records that definitely prove that the neighborhood is not safe. We are talking about a gated community with an HOA. We have annual meetings, and we pay our dues according to the regulations. In addition to that, also during the month of September, I had a personal meeting with the owners of Red Mocha LLC, and they handed me over a one-time offer that had definitely a deadline, in which they were pressuring the community to accept money on behalf of getting the application approval.[1796.54] getting the application approved. But they also had a Plan B behind the scenes. They also had a backup plan, which is in the letter here that I would like to hand over for your, for your, which I consider a blackmail. And finally...
All right, well, I'm not here to consider blackmails.
Oh, sorry.
I'm here to consider, is this appropriate or not appropriate
Okay.
for this particular community?
Yeah, okay.
And that's all I can do.
Okay. And finally, we got also an email dated November 16 in which they are notifying us that they are transitioning from a short-term rental to a plus-32-days option, which I also would like to hand over to them.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
So I, finally, I do not agree with the project, and I asked the commission to reject this application.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
My name is Daniel Guillermo Sanchez. I live in 2109 Grand Island Court.
And my name is Ricardo Sanchez, live in the same address.
Good evening.
So I'm going to read a letter on behalf of my father.
Please do.
Okay, so, "My family and I have lived in Mount Shadow's community for five and a half years now. We decided to buy our home here because of the peace and tranquility of our gated community. The fact that there are only nine homes make it a small community that we wanted to be a part of. We felt safe knowing that there is a private gate to prevent strangers from coming into our neighborhood unless they are invited. Our neighbors are family-oriented. There are families with six children and under the age of 21, retired neighbors as well. Between all, between all living here, we have nine dogs. It is an ideal place to raise a family. We all know each other. One family even provided a basketball hoop for the community to use in our private road. We are very respectful of each other and know to drive slow when we enter through the gate because we know any of our pets may be occasionally running loose, or the younger kids are still running, are learning to ride their bicycles, and know to watch out for them. My family and I have lived very peacefully until recently, when we started noticing that there are strangers in our community almost every weekend at the 2001 Grand Island property. There have been a series of incidents during the past year, and now I don't feel like we're living in a safe environment anymore."
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We refuse the permit.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, 2108 Grand Island Court.
You want to pull that microphone to you?
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Rosemary Nissisian-Saru, 2108 Grand Island Court.
Thank you.
First of all, I obviously live in the neighborhood. We value our safety more than the money that they've put on the table. We've submitted a, we've previously mailed in an objection from seven of the owners. The eighth owner has now moved in, and she's here to also object. I have that letter I'd like to submit for you. I also wanted to provide you with information about the violations to date. Red Mocha has been operating a short-term rental since October 2016. That's per their own advertisement on HomeAway.com. I have that for you. They are advertising Sleeps 21. They have six bedrooms. My understanding is that maximum occupancy is two people per room. Six times two is 12, not 21. We've seen busloads of people being dropped off over there. This exhibit I'm handing you also shows evidence where Red Mocha happily advertises their violations from several different people enjoying their stay there at our risk to safety. And lastly, public disturbances. We've submitted an exhibit documenting incidents for just one month period. That doesn't count everything we've been through from the last year. Finally, I want, I would ask the commission to consider NRS 179B. If you're not familiar with that statute, that's the Sex Offender Registration statute. The legislators of this state came together and decided that the safety of our, of our community, of our people, is to be valued higher than the privacy risk of sex offenders. But now you have the short-term residential rentals. How do you reconcile that with sex offenders? I'm just asking...
Ma'am, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not getting off a topic talking about sexual offenders versus short-term rentals.
Certainly.
Because we're here strictly based on, is this appropriate? Is it compatible and harmonious in the neighborhood, not of their sexual offenders or anything else, other than is it appropriate for the neighborhood? Is it compatible and harmonious?
Certainly. I appreciate that. I'll bring it back. My point went to notice, that we have no notice now because of that issue. But further on, Ken and Cara, however professional they would like to be, they cannot identify everyone who comes in that home. When you have an advertisement for a short term, it's only a credit card or a friend's credit card. They really can't monitor, they cannot do criminal checks. One of our neighbor has asked them, and they've said, "We can't do criminal checks, so we can't do background checks on every applicant." They're just strangers, and those strangers are in front of my yard, talking on their cell phones, screaming and yelling, talking to my kids. We have no safety. And last but not least, a final exhibit. We, just in five minutes on two different vacation rental websites, I located 18 short-term rentals within two blocks of us, and that's just east of Buffalo. So if I can submit that to you as well?
Please do.
I appreciate your consideration of it. And I don't know if those are legal or illegal, but they're obviously happening all over the place, and enough is enough. We appreciate if you would keep us safe.
Thank you. And don't think, please, hold your applause. The rules of conduct state no applause and no talking from the audience. And don't think that I was picking on you and I said, "We're not going to talk about sexual offenders and this and that." That's Title VI. That's business license and we are Title 19, and we're a planning body that just looks to seem as harmonious and compatible. So I do appreciate your comments, and everything that you said is heard loud and clear. So thank you for coming forward tonight.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Uh-huh. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Maristela Cardona, and I live 2005 Grand Island Court, and I'm the newest tenant in that neighborhood. I looked for many months for a nice, quiet neighborhood for me to live, since I'm a single woman. And if I knew that the next door, I'm right next door to the house in question, I would never buy the house. You know, I would like to live in a nice, nice, safe place, gated community, which only the tenants have the code. So I strongly oppose to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you having your brief comments. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Kenneth Carrier. I live at 2105 Grand Island Court. I've lived there for two years. I just recently moved here from Beverly Hills, California. It's definitely inappropriate. It's definitely not safe. More importantly is, there's people here who are talking who don't live, who don't even live there. So I don't understand what, how gorgeous the house may look, because that house isn't what our community is. It is not even the nicest house in the community. So I don't buy the Elvis suite and all, that's all redder to me. At the end of the day, I walk out of my house, I see strangers at 10 o'clock at night when I'm walking my dog, and I'm trying to go to my mailbox. I have people parked outside my gates. Just recently, we had some transit lady walking through someone's garage, went into their house, and I saw it from across the street, ran outside with a bat, went and chased this lady out the neighborhood, then we called the police. I don't want to come home at night and they have security guards come because these guys have 12 Ferraris, and they're all trying to kiss my you-know-what. And at the end of the day, it's like, I don't need private security at 12 o'clock. I don't, I don't want that. I don't want to buy me a gate. I can buy my own gate. I don't want any cheap cameras that don't even connect them out. It's all nonsense. At the end of the day, I did not move in there for this. They don't have permits. And at the end of the day, we have children who live there, and I like my privacy. I don't like to come out of my house at 8:00 in the morning, I got strangers walking around taking photos of my house. "Oh, we love your lawn. Oh, we love your garage." I don't need that. I don't need anybody invading my privacy that shouldn't be there. And anyone who lives there part-time, and all my parents live down, it doesn't matter. At the end of the day, they didn't have a permit, they're operating illegally, and at the end of the day, I just disapprove of it. Bottom line.
You didn't, you didn't bring your baseball bat tonight, did you?
No, I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
But I tell you this, what I did bring was, I'm here right now, and I shouldn't be here. This is two hours out of my time, and this is ridiculous.
I appreciate you...
All right, thank you.
...you coming forward. Good evening.
My name is Dr. Dodd Hayer. I live across the street, 2001 Home View Court. These short-term rentals have become a plague in our neighborhood. A nice, tranquil neighborhood, peaceful, people know their neighbors. You guys have got to do something in this, in this board of yours, this commission. You cannot allow these people to come in and do this stuff. It's so disrupting to the kind of lifestyle that we've worked hard for and really want to have.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
I appreciate it. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Diane Harrington. I live at 2020 Home View Court. I'm also across the street from this proposed short-term rental. I oppose it. I've been in my neighborhood for over 22 years. I raised my family there. Now I have my grandkids coming. I don't appreciate the increase in traffic and the increase in people that are there that we don't know, that we can't identify. We don't feel like it's safe for our neighborhood or a harmonious or safe situation for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Kimberly Phillips, 2240 Jamaica Court. We also have a similar problem, but what I would say, if someone has such a wonderful house, put it up for sale.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate everybody keeping their comments pretty short.
My name is Keith Thomas. I live at 1561 Windhaven Circle. I live about a mile away from the subject property. My name is one of the names on the petition opposing this particular application. And for the applicant to suggest that I'm not impacted by, by this is a specious argument. I visit in this neighborhood quite frequently. In fact, just a week or so ago, I was in the, in the cul-de-sac right across the street. Again, this is an incompatible use for this particular neighborhood, and I urge the commission to deny this application.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Good evening.
I'm Julie Topher, 7251 Delray Avenue, almost a mile from the neighborhood. I oppose this. I don't think that this is what you want in this neighborhood.
Thank you so much. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name's Yvonne Bosman, and I'm reading this for Amy Haskett, who is the property coordinator for Ken and Cara's. My name is Amy Haskett, and I'm often in charge of check-in at Cara and Ken's vacation rental. This involves going over all the rules and expectations, which are all supposed to throughout the house. The first rule is that we only allow parking, parking in the garage and driveways. There is absolutely no parking in front of the neighbor's houses. We have cameras outside the house to monitor this. As far as noise, I let the guests know that quiet hours in the neighborhood are between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM, and speakers are illegal to have outside vacation rentals in Las Vegas at any time. If the guests are being too loud, we follow procedures that can involve a $250 fine and removal from the property if the issue is not resolved. I also go over rules regarding the gate to the neighborhood. Each guest receives a text with a code prior to check-in, and we also have small cards with the gate code number printed on it for guests to take with them when they leave, and to have a sign posted at the gate with Cara's number on it to call for the code so that they do not call neighbors asking for it. In closing, although this is not the extensive list of the rules that I go over with the guests, these are the main points that I cover with them and involve being respectful of the neighbors. We care about the people who live in the neighborhood.
Ma'am, you're speaking in, I mean, directly about this property in relation to this property and not in regards to properties in general, correct?
Correct.
Okay, continue.
We care about the people who live in the neighborhood and do everything we can to make sure that the guests we have in our vacation rental do not negatively affect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, my name's Kyle Campbell, and I live at 2935 Aloha Ave. I take care of the maintenance and landscaping at this property. I am constantly fixing things to make sure this property is immaculate. When Cara and Ken have friends over, they often invite their employees, and they treat us like family. Anytime Ken and Cara are unavailable or on vacation, I am on call 24/7 for anything regarding the property. And get any issues the guests might have, I am able to talk with them over the phone or drive over to the house right away. If the neighbors ever have an issue and Ken and Cara are out of town, Cara always has her phone on her, and if she's on a plane, her calls are forwarded to me. I personally donate any less than perfect towels, bedding, and other items to the animal foundation. Any other items such as clothing left from the guest house that they do not wish return are donated to the safe house. Cara cares about the neighborhood and has sent me over to the neighbor's houses to help them with jobs needed done. I was always going over to the door, the, sorry, I was always going over to the next-door neighbor before she moved. Her husband was sick and passed away. Cara gave me food to send over to her several times, and we checked on her often before she moved. I have worked for Cara and Ken for almost three years, and they are extremely organized and thoughtful people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please. Name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Robert Zikafus. I reside at 7733 Rainbow Rising Avenue here in Vegas. I've gotten to know Ken and Cara McGee, who I'm here to speak on behalf of over the last several years, the last couple of years, getting to know them pretty well. I find them to be honest, loyal, very hard-working, down-to-earth, and conscientious people. I can't think of better people to operate in a home like this within the valley, recognizing that they are here to stay. And in fact, one example, whenever I've been there for dinner, we've been asked to park outside the gate if there are no spots within the driveway or right immediately in front of the house. So although they're in any of the, although they are at the end of the cul-de-sac, they ask us not to take up space in front of the other homes. I can't think of a better couple to operate a property like this. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming down tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ron Tobler. I live in the property back of these houses, and we have a fence there, and we have three-quarters of acre, so we almost cover the whole backyards of all, this whole group. And we, we can, we're, we have a four-foot wall that we can see over into their property. They, they can see into our property too. So when we're out in the backyard, you know, we're, obviously we're a little, try to be friendly, but we are against this property being sold and have a party house, and we are against this.
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to invite you back up here, and hopefully you know that I didn't want to hear from you at the beginning and hear from you at the end, and because a lot of your neighbors made a lot of comments about a lot of different things, and I know that you represent them and you represented other applications in the past, so if I could just say, if you could just sum up everything that was said in a very short fashion, that would be much appreciated.
If you would please hone in on this particular photograph that we have here. This is of the four...
Can you move your microphone a little bit? There you go. Thank you.
Those are the four race cars, the Parnelli-Jones Raceway that we experienced on September 5th, and the police car next to...
You can bring that microphone a little bit closer up to your mouth. There you go.
The police had to come because neighbor compliance, neighborhood compliance is simply not able to respond to these kinds of problems. And this will give you an idea, these, these four and other race cars were going down Tioga, down El Parque, down Monte Cristo, on, on Oke and back, blowing through stop signs. I tried to go out in my car and, and slow them down or talk to them, and they disregarded. What they did was did cookies in the middle of the road. Those cookies are still visible, if you'd like to take a look. My, I think you've been hoodwinked on this application. The Taylor Consulting Group submitted a letter that says, "This will not have a negative impact on the surrounding area." It also said, "Neighbors do not have a problem with this use being located here." Your staff investigation at page two, under the minimum special use permit requirements, Your staff investigation at page two, under the minimum special use permit requirements, number three says, "The use must comply with city noise regulations." It has not. Number one says, "The applicant will be required to obtain a business license prior to operating." There has been adequate admission this evening, both by the applicant and those who are involved within the opposition, that that ordinance has been violated again and again intentionally and willfully. The 660-foot ordinance is helpful, but probably not relevant here because from my house, it's less than 660 feet to this one, and it's also less than 660 feet from Casa Shangri-La, out the end of our cul-de-sac, which tonight, if you went by, has lifts and television cameras and spotlights. And if you went to the internet, you would see that these things are advertised with impunity. They don't say, "We have a quiet, short-use rental unit." Perhaps these particular applicants do, but the others in the area say, "We're having a party. We're inviting everybody." And if you just take a look at Casa Shangri-La, which is the one just at the end of our cul-de-sac, the combined impact and intensity of those two commercial uses has invented business in our area. Your application findings say in number four that the health and safety has not been compromised. In fact, it has. The rental activity before the application is a clear violation. The noise regulations are clear. The police response was true. You've heard, you've heard a good deal of testimony this evening. And finally, perhaps, and most tellingly, staff's reports said, "Well, a neighborhood meeting was not required," and nor was one held. And after a September 5th police report, and these Parnelli Jones incidents, and the adult Disneyland at the other end of our cul-de-sac, you have to protect us.
I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
And just for point of clarification, when you say the Lamborghinis were doing cookies, is that what the younger generations is calling donuts?
That's exactly what it is.
Okay, thank you. I was a little confused, sir. I appreciate your comments and appreciate you coming forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I appreciate your time. Marco Rizzo, 525 Ruby Vista Court, on behalf of the Vegas Vacation Rental Association. Ken, the applicant, is a member of the association and has attended many meetings. In September, he had an unfortunate incident that has turned all of his neighbors against him, unfortunately. No amount of screening could have precluded what occurred, but as a good operator, Ken did the right thing. As a member of our association, he called our 24-hour security hotline. That group had our security company go to the property immediately, talk to the tenants, kick them off the property, after which point, they stayed. They stayed overnight to ensure that those guys didn't come back and to protect the neighborhood so that the interests of the neighborhood were in mind there. Ken's been working diligently to get his property licensed and get on the right path. He's also, obviously, been working with his neighbors. Not sure they all agree with him, but they've been working through the issues with, after the incident. Up to this point, Ken had been operating quietly. In fact, had the support of most of his neighborhood before this incident. So we support Ken, and I ask that you look at, look at, look at the operation, look at what he's running aside from the singular incident, and look at him as an operator. He's qualified from a business point of view. The use is obviously allowed in the neighborhood, and you'll find him to be a good operator. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Seeing no one else, I'm gonna close the public hearing, turn this over to the applicant. I'll give you, I'll give you four minutes for rebuttal, if you would like one. If not, we'll just go ahead and deliberate on this. And I'm gonna go ahead and start the clock right now.
Thank you, Chairman.
Four minutes?
Thank you, Chairman. We realize there's significant opposition to our application, and we are very sensitive to all of their concerns. We understand them and we recognize them, but these are the facts. We have operated one of the most successful and highly rated short-term rentals in Las Vegas for the past year. There has never been a party held by guests, never loud music, never trash or excessive vehicles outside, aside from the photograph that you saw with the Lamborghinis. For nearly 10 months since we operated, we barely heard from our neighbors. Everything was completely smooth until the race car incident. We did have that one incident, but I think the way we responded to it is significant. I think it was a textbook example of how to respond to an incident. I think we did a good job on that. Other than that one incident, there's never been any disturbances from our short-term rental. The police reports are in your packet. I believe it's on page, page 14. That's a, it's a call for service from Metro.
There was no report issued because...
Yeah, there was no police report, but that's the only incident that the police have ever responded to our property. Code enforcement also agrees with that. The staff report, we also have noise monitor reports that show that there's never been any other disturbance other than that one. As I mentioned, we are extremely sensitive to the concerns of our neighbors. If we are granted a license, we will continue to be concerned with their, with anything that affects the neighborhood. We are very concerned about it. A couple of things I want to correct. One of our neighbors mentioned a transient that entered the neighborhood recently. That has nothing to do with us.
The baseball bat. It was a transient woman.
But that's fine.
It wasn't our...
We're not blaming you for the baseball bat.
It wasn't a guest of ours. It was a transient person. That could happen whether we have a short-term rental or not. We believe our short-term rental is an asset to the city and to the community, and it's something that the Planning Commission, the City Council, and everyone in Las Vegas should be proud of. I encourage the Planning Commission to carefully study the facts. If you do that, we believe you'll conclude that we are excellent operators and we deserve a special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and turn this over to the Planning Commission for discussion and possible action, starting with myself. I think it's a beautiful home. I'd love to stay there, but, you know, I mean, we do have to look at, there's 71 protests and, I mean, about the only approvals are, and maybe I missed a few, but it was like maintenance people or people doing maintenance within the community, or for you, working for you. But let me see, this is item 32, so we're in Ward 1, so I'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Quinn, and see if you have any comments.
Oh, I do.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a lot of comments for this applicant because we spent a good deal of my time and Commissioner Roush's time looking over this, and I spent a lot of time believing you, and I spent a lot of time encouraged by your plan and your project and how perfect it is. Then we sit down here, and you have 17 to 20 neighbors show up telling me otherwise about you. When it's one or two people, you can say to yourself, "Well, you know, they might not just like you, or they don't want you around, and 'cause you're very likable people," but when your entire neighborhood shows up, and neighbors from behind you, and around you, and next door to you, and, you know, somewhere along the line, we lost what was right and what was true, and that's why I'm sitting with this today. The other question I have, it's an important question, too, is after the October 10th incident, and that was a code enforcement violation as well as a Metro violation, am I correct in saying that? I'm sorry, September?
September 5th.
September 5th.
It was not a code enforcement violation.
And what was that? That was the cops? That was Metro?
Metro responded, correct.
Okay, and so after that, you just continued to operate, right, without thinking, maybe we should come in and get our special use permit, or, you know, maybe this is the time to do it?
Our permit was pending at that time when it happened.
Well, after September, on 10/3, you got women coming in the gate without a key. On 10/4, people say you just rented it from a friend. You got people waiting in Ubers. On 10/6, 10/11, 10/12, 12/13, 10/13, and 10/21, you know, the party kept rocking even after the cops came knocking.
No, there was no, absolutely, that's not correct.
What is this? I mean, this is a...
Those are, those are notes taken by the neighbors. We had an agreement with code enforcement that we were allowed to operate on a short-term basis until November 3rd.
Okay, well, code enforcement doesn't make that deal. The deal's made pretty much here, but I don't know about code enforcement saying you can operate without your, without your thing, so...
I'm sorry, the reason why we asked them for that is because a lot of the people, when we contacted them and said that we had this...
Excuse me for one moment, I'm...
Mr. Chair, you may want to let the Commissioner finish her statements first before they start responding.
Yeah, I only have a few more, I only have a few more statements. You know, I've sat up here for, you know, the whole time this ordinance has been written, and it was written by my councilwoman, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and for 10 years, we've worked together beautifully, and we continue to do so. And the reason is because when she writes an ordinance that says 660 feet of nothing else being close to you, that's something I can stand firm on and say, "You know what? There's no others. We got no complaints. Let's give it a try, come back with a review." Or my other thing I stand on is if you got the 660 and there's another one around you and you have neighbors upon neighbor, upon neighbor show up, they mean more to me than the ordinance. You have unsettled these people. You have taken what they've known to live, and you've kind of turned it into, might not just be a party house, it sounds like a party street. Unfortunately, as much as I sat there in your face telling you how wonderful and great this is, I always say to new commissioners, "Don't ever show your hand before you play the cards," because after the game, you might, you dealt something different, and I was dealt a very different hand than what you showed me at Starbucks. I will not be supporting this item tonight. I will be, my motion this evening will be for denial. If anybody else has anything to say, that's fine.
Commissioners?
If not, let's go.
Commissioner Roush.
I did meet with the applicant, for the record, and the story, you know, is similar to what Commissioner Quinn said. You know, we thought that you had the one isolated incident, and then I come to find out that there are several incidents, and it is unfortunate because I think otherwise you might be a good operator. It is a nice home, but that's not the jurisdiction under which we make our decisions. We have to decide based on the land use and based on the impact on the neighborhood, and this is a privileged license. It's something that we think is important. We want to preserve our neighborhoods. We want to be able to make sure that we have peace and harmony and compatible land uses, and so it's difficult for me to tell you this, but I'm probably not going to be able to support you for these reasons. I do have one question for the neighbors or for the applicant, if someone can answer my question. Are there two short-term rentals in this neighborhood, and what is Shangri-La, Casa de Shangri-La, and does staff know anything about this other location?
Sir, the public hearing's closed. We're not bringing anybody else back up here.
Would I ask somebody to be able to...
What's that? Did you ask through the chair?
I'm sorry, through the chair. I apologize. Can we make sure that we find out, what is Casa de Shangri-La?
Okay, through the chair, I'll allow you to ask or answer that, but I will ask you just to speak to me and to tell me your name and address for the record one more time.
I'd love to. Julie Christensen, 2000 Homeview Court. We also have Villa Shangri-La, and it's turned into a circus. There are cars there. I have pictures of cars lining up the street. That's what my husband was talking about with cranes and lifts. They're painting, they painted in October, they did Halloween, and they do internet videos there, and they have people coming, they encourage people to bring alcohol, and it's a party. Bring spray paint, help, you know, encourage our artists. We all complained, we signed petitions, we called Lois. Now they're back again for the Christmas show, and I've got pictures.
I appreciate that, but I'm gonna go ahead and cut this off right now. I mean, I've closed the public hearing. I'm not gonna keep bringing people up here. We've closed the public hearing, the public hearing's closed, and I'm gonna go ahead and ask Director Lowenstein. I'm looking at the map, and I do not see Casa de Shangri-La on this map, or whatever it is.
Villa. It is O'Fannan and...
I don't see anything on this map, so if it's actually being operate, if they're actually operating anything, any business out of, you know, within this radius...
Look it up on the internet, it's everywhere.
Ma'am, please, sit down.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Mary McElhone, Deputy Planning Director, I think I can answer your question.
Yes.
If you look on the map, you'll see in the circle, the one that has Grand Island Court, up to the right, you'll see 2101 Pioneer. It's nicknamed as Casa de Shangri-La. It does hold a business license for a short-term rental. That license was received prior to July 1st, or I should say, June 21st of 2017. They have until July 1st of 2019 to come forward to get a special use permit. Code enforcement is very aware of the issues at this location and is working through them.
Thank you. And I apologize about telling people to sit down, but we closed the public hearing, and I don't want to keep having this back and forth between the public and the Planning Commission at this point. Now, this is a particular project that is legally, legally licensed according to our staff, and they have to come before us for a special use permit before whatever the deadline is. So we're not talking about the application tonight. The application, and it is illegal for us to talk about an application that is not on the agenda tonight, so we're talking about this particular application, and this is the only application that I want to hear about tonight. Commissioner Roush, I apologize that I cut you off. If you would like to continue, please do.
No, I'm fine, Chairman. I just, I didn't realize if you wanted me to ask through you, I'm still learning, so...
Oh, that's perfectly fine. I wasn't upset about that.
I just thought maybe there was another...
I've seen four people coming up here.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
I think Commissioner Toussaint has a...
I just wanted to note that there, on our map, we only show this one short-term rental in that Casa de, or Villa de Shangri-La is not depicted on here.
It is, but it's outside the 660-foot radius.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toussaint.
Yes, I did meet Mr. Graham on property, and it's a very nice property. I noticed that in a lot of the bedrooms, instead of just having one king-size bed, there were several beds in there, so I guess that's how you're thinking you're going to have two beds so you can have 21 people. That seems like a lot of people. My heart goes out to your neighbors. It really, really does. My heart goes out to you, too. I know you spend a lot of money on this property, but I live in a small gated community, and I have for years, and I can tell you, just from personal experience, I wouldn't want this next door to me. I just wouldn't. My grandkids are little, they're riding their bikes, they're playing. My children are grown. I'm torn, I'm really torn, because we have a statute that we have to abide by, but I can tell you, if this was next door to me, I would really be upset, and I have to be real honest about that, so I don't think you'll have my support tonight.
Yes, Commissioner DeSavio.
I think it was adequately said by Commissioner Quinn, so I'll just stay with that.
Thank you. We ready for motion, sir?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it possible I could say one thing?
Sure. One thing. Through you, Mr. Chairman, is it right?
Yes.
They worked hard.
Commissioner Quinn...
Through you.
You could, you could say one thing to me.
I, you know, we definitely didn't try to mislead anyone ever. That wasn't our intention, and we, you know, we did continue to have the rental with, with code enforcement saying that we could, we could continue on, and the reason why they allowed us to do that is because, you know, a group of, a group of 10 or 12 people, it's very difficult for them to get a hotel last minute, and so we went to them and asked them if we could continue on, and they said it was okay, and so we thought that's who we were dealing with. We never knew that there was, we had to go to someone else to do that. And we actually thought we had a lot of support from our neighbors. There is, there are other people in the neighborhood that are not here tonight and that, that have given us support.
I appreciate your comments, and you have a beautiful place, and like I say, when it comes down to it, for me, I wish this was like Ritz-McDav in the middle of downtown. I'd probably go run it for me this evening, but, you know, there are certain places that I think it's, I mean, it could be appropriate and not appropriate, and, you know, we do listen to the neighbors, but I don't know. We'll, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion, and we'll see where this goes. Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you, Chairman. Item number 32, Abeyance SUP 71656. My motion this evening will be for denial.
There's a motion on the floor for denial. Reminding everybody that a yes vote is for denial. Please cast your votes. And that motion carries, noting the abstention of Commissioner Creer.
Mr. Chairman, that action is final unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. All right, we have gone on until 8:30, so we're gonna go ahead and take a 10-minute break, not a 45-minute break. We're gonna, you know, just get this meeting over with quick tonight. We're gonna, you know, just get this meeting over with quick tonight.
All right, good evening. This planning commission meeting is called to order. Starting with, moving on to item number thirty-four Z O N seven-one-nine-three-eight, applicant owner AutoZone Parts Incorporated for possible action on a request for rezoning from U undeveloped SC Service Commercial General Plan Destination and RE Residential Estates C One Limited Commercial, north of Vegas, Vegas Drive, east side of Fairhaven Street, Ward Five. Staff recommends approval. Item number thirty-five V A R seven-one-nine-four-one for possible action on a request for variance to allow one hundred parking spaces where one hundred and sixty-four are required. Ward Five Barlow, staff recommends denial. Item thirty-six S U P seven-one-nine-three-nine for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved special use permit, S U P three-five-four-two-zero for seventeen thousand seven-hundred-and-nine square foot expansion to an existing fourteen thousand sixty-eight square foot auto parts, new and rebuilt used at four-nine-three-zero, Vegas Drive, Ward Five. Staff recommends denial. And finally, item thirty-seven S D R seven-one-nine-four-zero for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan review, S D R seven-five-four-one-nine for a proposed seventeen thousand seven-hundred-and-nine square foot in addition to an existing fourteen thousand sixty-eight square foot auto parts store with a waiver to allow a six-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the west property line where fifteen feet were required. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request as this will bring the subject properties into compliance with the existing general plan designation of SC Service Commercial. Staff is recommending denial of the parking variance special use permit to expand the use and the site review as the applicant has created self-imposed hardships by not providing sufficient parking and landscape buffers when there are no unique or extraordinary circumstances associated with the subject site that would inhibit the ability to meet the minimum development standards set forth by Title Nineteen. Please note additional letters of support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. My name is Tony Sless, address nineteen-eighty Festival Plaza Drive here on behalf of the applicant AutoZone. If I may direct your attention to the overhead. Just to give you kind of lay of the land where we are, the site is just under four acres, highlighted in yellow here, generally located near Vegas and Decatur. Just to kind of orient you a little bit more with the area, right around here, south of the site, south and east is Ed Fouton Park and Las Vegas Municipal Golf Course, just to kind of give you a general idea of the property. As mentioned, there is an existing auto zone on the site. It is currently about fourteen thousand square feet. You can see the current elevation or building right here. We are requesting a couple of different things. The first component which staff is recommending approval of is a conforming zone change to C One. Can see the pink in the, the pink which the property is surrounded by is Zone C One. The front portion of our property is Zone C One, the back portion is just the RE. It does conform to the general plan, it is service commercial, so a C One zoning is appropriate based on the general plan as well as the surrounding uses. What is, next basically is our site plan and really the, the largest issue, I think, before you determine is the, really the parking. As indicated, this is an existing building of fourteen thousand square feet, about eighty-two-hundred square feet of it is open for retail uses. The back portion or remaining six thousand is for stored inventory. Predominantly, the expansion is another seventeen thousand. Again, that is for stored inventory. And that is a very important point that I want to make. If this was a thirty-one thousand square foot building that was all retail use, I could understand the required parking being one hundred and sixty-five spaces. And I understand that staff has to review it as that use. But in reality, the, the portion that is open to the public is eighty-two hundred square feet. The back twenty thousand square feet or so is for stored inventory. It is not really retail use. And so we are providing one hundred parking spaces for an auto zone. If you were to do the calculations on an eighty-two hundred square foot building that was true retail, that ratio would work out to about forty-one parking spaces. Additionally, with the stored inventory, you would have maybe another twenty spaces that would require sixty. Like I said, we're providing one hundred spaces. Not to be too sarcastic, but I think, you know, that's a lot of people buying windshield wipers, brake fluids, and things like that, that we're providing a hundred parking spaces. So with that, we, we understand staff's, what staff is saying, but I think when you look at it and what's going on here, this is an appropriate use. The zoning's appropriate, it's merely an expansion of some stored inventory. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward to state your name and address for the record. See you anon. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, turn this over to planning commission for discussion and possible action, starting with Commissioner Roush.
Thank you, Chairman. I met with the applicant and I think that it's an expansion of an existing building. So we're talking about a use issue. And it's a industrial use in a commercial building. So you had, I think we talked about the fact that you had the choice to either go for the industrial use or go for the commercial use. And you chose to go for the commercial use with the waiver of the parking. Is that, do I have that correct?
Yeah, if I may.
Please.
Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Roush, we had at the outset, two different paths we could have gone down. We could have requested a general plan amendment and then tried to stick in a, some type of industrial use that is adjacent to commercial. And then as you get a little bit interior, closer to residential, we thought that was the least preferred route, trying to change the general plan to some type of industrial where there is no industrial really in the area. So instead, we thought the conforming zone change, since the, all four acres is planned service commercial, the conforming zone change to C One made more sense. And then as a result of that, one of the dominos to that was then the parking scale does increase because of that, but we felt that again, because the commercial nature of it and the back half being stored, that, that we would more than satisfy the parking for the use.
Right, and, and I agree with that. I understand the, the line of thinking. My question is more in regard to what you're doing with the balance of the property. So I noticed in staff comments that they'd like to see a reversionary map or a commercial subdivision map. Which is it that you've decided to go with?
So the, there are basically four properties that are in there. We have the front portion where the current one is developed, we have two that are in the middle, and then on the far north. Because the expansion will cover additional boundary lines, we do have to make that decision on which one we're gonna do. I'm not sure that we know at this point, but we do have to, we cannot build across property lines before we can build a building, before we can pull a building permit, we will have to have that appropriate mapping in place. There's a condition requiring us to work with the city survey, surveyor and-
And just to make a, one quick comment. The city surveyor's the one who typically makes up the determination if it's a subdivision map or a reversionary map or whatever. So you don't have a choice in what type of map?
So I, I'm, I'm going somewhere with this.
Okay, go ahead.
So my point is that if it's a commercial subdivision map, then it's very easy for you to further subdivide the property, peel off the piece to the north, it would now have C One zoning, and then the neighbors get what they get in terms of whoever buys it. Obviously, they have to come before us at that point, and I do understand that. What's going to be incumbent upon you at this point amongst this planning commission is why would you not just provide the parking that is available for you to provide on the lot to the north, which wouldn't be an impact on the neighborhood, especially if you've got the landscape buffer and all of those good things. And so those are the issues I'm trying to weigh in my mind right now. And this is not in my ward, so I'd like to hear from the planning commissioner whose ward this is, instead of making a decision, but I would like to hear your answer as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kirk.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments from my peer. I, I don't have a problem with it strictly for the fact that it is for more storage area and not for retail use. There is a retail store up front, and I think that coming in there, it'll, 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 it'll fit fine. And I don't think there's a need for the additional parking spaces. So you'll find my support.
Thank you. And at the beginning, I had an issue with it because I seen that you're, I mean, it, it looked like you're severely underparked. But then after meeting with you, whichever thing that you stated when we met together was substantially the same thing that you stated today when we, when you gave your presentation. But considering this auto parts store and you're getting a special use permit for the expansion of auto, auto parts store, and basically it's more warehouse space, and the auto parts stores that I, I pass by, I mean, aren't at a hundred percent occupancy. And I mean, some of these, they might have thirty parking spaces with about six cars on them. So I, I really don't have a problem with that. And if, if it comes back and somebody else wants to do something, then we'll have to look at it and see if it's appropriate. And if there's no other comments, I'll be looking for a motion. Commissioner Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Agenda item thirty-four Z O N Z one-nine-three-eight, I move for approval.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor for approval, item number thirty-four. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Agenda item thirty-five V A R seven-one-nine-four-one, I move for approval.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda item thirty-six S U P seven-one-nine-three-nine, I move for approval.
Please cast your votes. And that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Agenda item thirty-seven S D R seven-one-nine-four-zero, I also move for approval.
Thank you. Please cast your votes. And that motion carries. Director Lowenstein?
Mr. Chairman, these items will move forward to City Council at the January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting.
Thank you, and guess, happy holidays. Have a nice evening. Okay, moving on to item thirty-eight Z O N seven-one-nine-seven-eight, Naif Nassar. Owner, Merkur Corp., for possible action on a request for rezoning from C One Limited Commercial to C Two General Commercial at one-four-zero-one East Charleston Boulevard, Ward Three Coffin. Staff recommends approval. Is applicant here? Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, and if you have no comments, I, I'm sorry, staff?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Naif Nassar.
I, I'm sorry, sir. I'm gonna ask the staff for their staff report. I accidentally jumped, jumped ahead. I was trying to go a little bit too quick.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's proposing to rezone the subject site from C One to C Two. The request conforms to the existing C Commercial General Plan designation and is consistent with surrounding zoning districts. The uses that are permitted in the C Two District are compatible with the surrounding uses and development. Please note that there is an additional letter of support since publication.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Naif Nassar. I am at one-zero-one-six-two Beddick Avenue. I'm requesting this, if it's, there is no problem.
Thank you. All right, this was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. See you anon, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible action. I feel that this is appropriate, I feel that staff made the right decision. And if there's no further comments, could we go ahead and get a, get a motion?
Through the chair, prepared to make a motion, item thirty-eight Z O N seven-one-nine-seven-eight, motion for approval.
Motion's on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. Everybody, please cast your votes. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Director Lowenstein?
Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to the January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen City Council meeting.
Thank you, appreciate it. Moving on to item, relating items forty-eight and forty-nine. Item forty-eight V A R seven-one-nine-nine-five, applicant Mojave Realty Partners, owner, two-one-eight South Eleventh Street LLC, for possible action on a request for variance to allow zero additional parking spaces where three additional parking spaces are required for a parking impaired development at two-one-eight South Eleventh Street, Ward Three Coffin. Staff recommends denial. And item number forty-nine S D R seven-one-nine-nine-six, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for the addition of two dwelling units to an existing six-unit multifamily residential building, Ward Three Coffin. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please. Mr. Chairman, oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting to remodel and re-roof an existing six-unit apartment building to accommodate two additional multifamily units. However, the building itself would not increase in floor area or footprint size. As the site is considered parking impaired, only the additional parking spaces needed to accommodate the two new units are required to be provided. The paved area at the rear of the building would be striped to accommodate four vehicles, which is one space less than is currently provided. The applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by adding two additional residential units to the site, creating an increase in parking demand that cannot be met on-site. As the site is already parking impaired, remodeling of the existing units would still allow conformance to the Title Nineteen requirements. Staff therefore recommends denial of both the variance and the site development plan review. Note that additional approvals were received after publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael Coxon, owner of Mojave Realty Partners, one-zero-zero-nine, Secret Garden.
Sean Creedeman, owner of Mojave Realty Partners, ten-oh-nine, Secret Garden.
Thank you.
And just want to turn it over to our architect, Craig Palacios, from Bunnyfish.
Hello, Mr. Palacios.
Chair Brison, vice chair, commissioners, thanks for having us. Craig Palacios, two-oh-eight South Maryland Parkway, for the record.
Thank you.
I represent Mojave Realty Partners. A little background on the, on the projects, it's located here in the, in the downtown area, and what we're looking at is a sort of combination of a residential type house with multifamily. Let's see here. Currently looks like this.
There you go.
It's a pretty current view of it before my clients took over the property. What looks like a single-family residential house in the front and a four-plex towards the back, it's a, a more of a- back. It's a more of a commercial masonry-type project that have been connected. Right now, as it stands, pre-renovation, we have one, two, three, four, five units. And then this sort of front area that was like a single-family, smaller residential of the period of its time, sort of split into two. We believe that the one was used as an office, but it could, it was also set up where somebody could live there. So what we'd like to do is take the two in the front that are the sort of combination of the two and make them into three more livable, more appropriate units that would function. Should function more like this. So, again, keeping the similar pattern of one, two, three, four units, the fifth one, and then taking the one recognized unit that had the office built into it and making that into three smaller units. The improvements of the neighborhood are substantial. You can see increased landscaping, architecture that's respectful to its original time period, which was mid-century mod with some modern amenities added to it, such as the wood fence with the signage, desert landscaping. And then what you see is some amenity for the residents. This is the quasi-covered parking in the rear. Yep, there we go. So we'd have sort of a shade structure with water feature, desert landscaping, a common area for, for the residents, and then the covered parking. Color palette and materials, as well as landscaping, that we feel accent the, again, original architecture with the improved architecture, as well as the neighborhood relative context. And then substantial increase to the landscape using zero scape and desert landscaping.
Thank you. All right. This was a notice as public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Jay Dapper, and my address is 985 White Drive. And I just wanted to say that I own several properties in this area, and I think that this is a fantastic project. And I'm really excited to see people putting money and tremendous efforts into the design of a project right down the street from a bunch of projects that I own. So I think this is a great project, and I hope you guys approve it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Turn this over to the planning commission for discussion, possible action. I'll go ahead and start and just say, the, the, what we have on our screen shows up a lot better than, than your, than your boards. But I think it's a pretty awesome design. I've had the opportunity to work with Bunnyfish Studios in the past. We don't have any current ongoing projects, so therefore, I'll disclose that. But there's no reason why, I still have an independent judgment, so I'll be voting on this matter. And I will say that I met with the applicants probably six or eight months ago, before they even brought this before to the city. And they were just talking about what they were planning on doing. And it was weird because the Water District had it at like, six units in the city, or eight units in the, so the city had it at six, and then NBNG had it at seven. And everybody didn't, nobody knew how many units actually existed in, in the actual apartment complex. But it, it's a cool little apartment complex, and there's a lot of these little apartment complexes around there that are getting fixed up. And I think they're putting in a considerable amount of money and, and a great design. And one that, unique things about this particular parcel is directly across the street, if you go to the maps, you'll see that there's a parking lot directly across the street for, I don't know, Craig, do you, Mr. Palacios, do you know what the parking lot's for that's directly across the street?
If, the, the one directly across the street is a private parking lot that a law firm two doors down owns.
Right.
They use just a fraction of it, and they have, from time to time, rented some of the spaces to us. There's an abundance there.
And, and I'm not necessarily stating that you can rent spaces from them, or that, I mean, because that requires perpetual easements and so on and so forth. However, one thing that I noticed was, there's a curb line going all the way down that, that block. And every time I pass by there, there's nobody parked along that, along that entire block, because everybody that goes to the business parks in the parking lot. So if a few people are parking on the street, I don't think that that's a big issue. That's just my opinion.
May I?
Yes.
Yeah, there's substantial parking in the neighborhood. So the reason that we rented spaces from them and don't anymore is because we ended up not needing them. There's always parking in front of our office, which is at 28 South Maryland Parkway, on Maryland Parkway side, as well as on the Carson side. And then on their street, you're absolutely right. There's, there's rarely anybody parked on the street, so there's substantial parking in the neighborhood.
Right. Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Carr?
Thank you. So you kind of touched on it, but you didn't, unless I missed it. The issue of denial has to do with having the additional, having the addition and not having the additional parking space going on with it. So what is your plan to address it? We talked about a few things, but what is your definitive plan of how you, how you choose to deal with, you're gonna add more people and not have parking? I mean, are you just gonna utilize the street? I'm not telling you what to do. Utilize the street, and is that your right to utilize the street?
Yeah, I mean, that's the plan. We feel it's a very urban place. We feel that it'll be a place where the parking that's there, which is one shy from the current code, will grow into itself and, and function better as there's more opportunities. We know there's other properties nearby, the Pioneer Apartments.
It's, it's three additional spaces. You said it's one shy. To allow zero additional parking spaces where three additional spaces are required for a parking impaired development.
Yeah. But at any rate, we feel that there's sufficient parking for this neighborhood, which, you know, we, I live and work in. I've done a number of properties there. It is shy at the moment, and we're not adding any square footage. And, you know, it's been questionable about whether we're adding, adding people, because there's been a number of people that live in here. And like Trinity said, there's a question about how many units were actually being rented at the time that we took over it. So our, our goal is to provide a property for a clientele that would probably live and work in the neighborhood and hopefully work at one of the local businesses nearby.
Commissioner Roush?
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
Hit the wrong button. I want to applaud the applicant and, and the architect who's representative for a great plan. I think that this represents the type of redevelopment we really want to see downtown. I think that it's a great complement to the neighborhood. It's a beautiful plan. I wanted just to ask a couple questions for clarification. Looking at the site plan, Mr. Palacios, can you please help me understand, you're not building anything new, correct? You're taking the existing building envelope and footprint, and you're just enhancing what's already there? Is that correct, or am I misunderstanding?
Oh, the, did you say the envelope?
The existing building envelope remains the same, or you're adding some square footage to it? I'm a little confused on the previous versus current. Okay.
Yeah, we are beautifying it.
Right.
But it stays the same envelope. We aren't making it any bigger.
Same footprint.
Correct.
Just changing the configuration interior.
Correct.
Wise. And can you step me through the unit mix? Is it an eight-unit project? And are they all one-bedrooms, or some of them two-bedrooms?
They are all one-bedroom studios.
Okay. And last but not least, and I don't know if this is a question that you can answer, or maybe you can, staff can answer. I actually don't know the answer to this question, and I have an apartment complex downtown. Wow. Can we do tandem parking, or is tandem parking not allowed in our current code? Because I've lived in communities in California where tandem parking is allowed. Don't know if that's something we've ever addressed in the downtown parking code.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yes. Mr. Swanson?
So you can have tandem parking. However, we only count the space that you can get out of the driveway or wherever you're parked. So the first space is the only one that we can count. Can't block another space.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have a question for Mr. Palacios. How big is the water feature fountain that you have?
It's actually depicted here.
Is it greater than 25 square feet?
No.
No?
No.
Is that okay?
Yes, but I can place it anyway.
Okay. So, I mean, Director Lowenstein, will you just explain the reason for the question?
Sure, Chairman. Okay, and Title 14.11 of the municipal code is where the drought plan exists, in which it states, a water feature in either a single-family or multifamily development cannot exceed the 25 square feet. If it does, there's a process to seek a waiver. But in this particular case, that abundance of caution would place the condition just asking for conformance to that drought plan.
Okay. Yeah, so if we're talking about square footage of the, the water surface, it would be less than 10.
Well, either way, it's, it's just, if it's a redundant condition, it just makes sure that there's conformance of the drought plan. Because you mentioned the water feature, I didn't know what the square footage is. And especially when it goes towards building permit and that way, this is just, we'll make sure that it remains in conformance with the code.
Thank you. And a question for Deputy Fire Marshal David Klein.
You know, whenever I was reading through this, I was a little bit confused, because the Las Vegas Valley Water District stated that they must be in compliance with the, you know, backflow devices and make sure they do fire flow calculations. But I know this is really a building-related question, and not really a planning-related question. But just out of curiosity, would they be required to put in a fire suppression system? They're not increasing the overall size of the building. And so...
Mr. Chairman, the, yes, the Water District does have some requirements for available water for fire protection. We have had some discussions with, in pre-applications and numerous meetings about that. There are multiple different ways we can provide that protection to, to diminish that requirement, through a 13D or a 13R type system, which does not take a substantial amount of water to make it happen. I know we've had some other projects that are very similar, with the level of remodeling side would require that anyway. A few projects were continuing those conversations on this one also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, Vice Chair Cherry?
Through the chair. If there's no other comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Chairman, I apologize. I was going to finish my comments prior, but I wanted to make sure that I put it down for the record, that in, in the category, when you lived here your whole life, you, it's a small world, gets smaller every day. The applicants work with my husband, and Mr. Palacios has done work for me in the past, although I have no current projects with him right now. And I'm just going to say that even though they work in the same office, I don't know them well, and it will not affect my vote one way or the other. So I will be voting on this item tonight. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Through the chair.
Please.
Prepared to make a motion. Item number 48VAR71995, a motion for approval.
Motion for approval. On the floor, please cast your vote. And please post. That motion carries.
Item number 49SDR71996, making motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
And am I asked Director Lowenstein to add the additional condition?
Thank you, Chairman. The condition would read, "Any proposed water feature shall conform to the drought plan found within Title 14.11 of the Las Vegas Municipal Code."
And the applicant's fine with it?
Our pleasure.
And the motion maker's fine with the amended motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's on the floor with the added condition. Please cast your vote. That motion carries. All right. Director Lowenstein?
Mr. Chairman, these items will move forward to the City Council on January 17, 2018.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. All right. Moving on to item number 50 and 51. Item number 50VAR72050, applicant owner, Sammy's Food Service, Inc., for possible action on a request for variance to allow a two-foot rear yard setback where 50 feet's required at 6330th Street, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends no. Item number 51SDR71856, for possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed delivery and service vehicle storage development with a 4,500 square foot building with waivers still low, zero-foot perimeter landscape buffers along the northwest, south, and south property lines where eight feet's required, Ward 3 Coffin. Staff recommends no. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has proposed to construct a 4,500-square-foot building two feet from residentially zoned property with no landscape buffer to shield the residential use from the commercial use. Staff finds the proposed development is not compatible with the adjacent residential development and is recommending denial of both applications. Please note additional letters of support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Cristobal Santos, and I live on 6127 Rocky Top Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada. And I'm part owner of Sammy's Food Service.
Good evening. My name is Maria Santos. I'm 6127 Rocky Top Avenue, and I'm also part owner of Sammy's Food Service.
Thank you. Do you have any comments?
Well, we come tonight to, you know, we buy this property maybe like three, four months ago. It's empty, and I know the city got a lot of problems with this property in the past. And we just proposed to, you know, we own a property across the street, but we need more space, because our, our business is growing. So we proposed this construction on this property.
Okay, perfect. This was a notice as public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Turn this over to the planning commission for discussion, possible action. Starting with Vice Chair Cherry.
Through the chair, if I may. A question for the applicant. Why couldn't you get any landscaping on that? I believe it's the west side adjacent to the residential.
Okay, one of the reasons is the layout of the property. It's only 100, 100 square feet wide. And for, the city is request eight-feet landscaping, and from that eight-feet, we had to give another two feet to, to start the construction of the building. So it's gonna be 10 feet.
Okay, so that would have meant less parking.
And that is, I'm sorry, it's, that's gonna shore our parking spaces to make the requirement for the city.
Okay. Wait to hear from my fellow commissioners on this.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Quinn.
Your trucks that are gonna be stored on this property, are they gonna be worked on? Is that, if they break, or, you know, do you have mechanics on the seat?
No, no, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I, when I originally looked at this, I absolutely hated it. And then I started looking at it more and more last night. I didn't think you were putting in landscaping. And it looks like you're putting in landscaping along the front edge, along the sidewalk. And I think it'd probably be the only industrial warehouse space in the neighborhood that has any landscaping, unless it be called the wooded shrubs that are overgrown, landscaping across the street. Currently, this lot is covered in about, I don't know currently, but whenever I looked at the photos, about 75 cars, and it's just like a big junkyard. You know, I would, would have liked to have had, you know, landscaping across the back, but, you know, if you're on Vegas Drive, or is it Vegas Drive, or what is it?
This is Charleston and 30th Street.
Valley Street. If you're on Valley Street, where the, on the west side, where the multifamily homes are, looking across the block, well, all you see is a RV and a whole bunch of junk cars and everything else.
That's correct.
So this will kind of help block the view of, of all that, and kind of help predetermine where parking spaces are going. And it will allow, you know, a little bit of landscaping along the front and clean up the overall property. I don't think that the building is the most aesthetically pleasing building, and not due to the fact that it's covered in metal, because I like buildings covered in metal. And the neighboring buildings covered, covered with metal. And, but I think it'll be a better view than what the neighbors are currently looking at. So after considering this for about 45 minutes last night and looking into it, I feel more comfortable with it. So if there's no other comments, I'll be... There's no other comments, I'll be looking for a motion.
Through the chair, I'm prepared to make a motion, and thank you for your input, because that helped me see the light a little better. Item number 50, VAR 72050, make a motion for approval.
Thank you. A motion for approval, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Item number 51, SDR 71856, I make a motion for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor for approval, please cast your vote. Commissioners, please cast your votes. Commissioner DeSalvio. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to the City Council meeting on January 17, 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item 52. VAR 71958, applicant owner, Baco Homes LLC, for possible action on a request for variance to allow an existing accessory structure Class II Casita to have a one-foot setback from the rear and side yard property lines where three feet is required, and to allow a one-foot separation from the main building where six feet is required at 2401 Wilson Avenue, Ward 3 Coffin, staff recommends denial. Item 53, VAR 71... Oh, I'm sorry, the, those items are separate items, so staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has requested a variance for an existing accessory structure located within the required side and rear yard setback areas. The structure could be relocated or redesigned to meet the requirements of Title 1906. As no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, staff is recommending denial as a self-imposed hardship. Please note that this item is located in Ward 3, not in Ward 1, and also note that there are additional letters of protest and wanting support since publication.
Thank you. There's an applicant here. Seeing none, I'm going to control this item until the end of the meeting. Moving on to item number 53, VAR 71970, applicant owner, 1015 Huntridge LLC, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a proposed 45-foot-tall freestanding sign where 40 feet is allowed, to allow 1,404 square feet of signage area along Charleston Boulevard where 1,032 square feet is allowed, to allow two canopy signs to extend above the edge of the canopy where such is not allowed, the area of the canopy signs to exceed 51% of the canopy faces where 20% is allowed, and a wall sign to extend six feet above the top of the building wall where 12 inches is allowed at 1140 East Charleston Boulevard, Ward 3 Coffin, staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is proposing signage for the existing Circle K convenience store, reflecting a mid-century modern design in keeping with the design of the existing Huntridge sign to the west. The aesthetics of the proposed signs are period correct, visually appealing, and appropriate for the surrounding area. However, there are multiple design issues which do not beat the sign requirements of Title 19. With slight modifications to the sign designs, the requested variances could all be eliminated. Staff therefore recommends denial. Note that there were additional approvals and protests received after publication.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jay Dapper, and my address is 985 White Drive. I am the owner of the Huntridge Shopping Center, and I purchased the center about two years ago, and I've been going through pretty significant renovation of the shopping center, but most importantly, I've worked very, very hard to keep the Googie architecture and the mid-century modern look of the center, and we have done some brand-new signs and remodeled some old existing signs, and I was hoping to show you a few of those today, and then just briefly tell you about what we're proposing. Last year, we won the MERS M U D A award, which was for our large pylon sign, and the picture of that sign is here. So this is the existing sign that was approved last year. As you can see, it's a large neon sign that, again, fits the same mid-century modern look and feel, and, you know, this is a sign that we're very proud of, and we're thrilled the city supported us when we presented that last year. And just recently, we remodeled the facade of the Savers that's been there for over 20 years. All the storefront glass was old and falling down, and as you can see above it, there's brand-new neon signage that kind of goes along with the theme of the shopping center. This was a very difficult thing to accomplish, because when you work with larger companies like Savers and Circle K, they like to really keep their brand standards consistent, and when, you know, I initially came to them and said, "Hey, you know, we need you to kind of follow along and be a part of this shopping center." Initially, they said no, and finally, they got on board, and this is the amazing result. And the same thing, we recently opened up a brand-new Wingstop at the shopping center, and again, you can see Wingstop, you know, they kind of resisted in the beginning and didn't want to have that vintage-looking signage, but eventually, they saw that, you know, everybody was participating in this, and you can see how amazing it came out. And then, finally, what we're proposing this evening, which is the new Circle K signage. One of the really cool things about this sign is the big green arrow that you see is the 1950s, 1960s logo that Circle K once used, and they, before they were Circle K, they were a different company, Union Gasoline Company, and they were that existing tenant way back in the day, in the 19, early 60s, when this convenience store and gas station was originally there. So although we do have a few waivers, I believe that the signage is very consistent with what the Planning Commission and the City Council have approved in the past, and I respectfully ask for your support and approval.
Thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and start. I think did a great job with the Huntridge sign. That was one that I supported, and it turned out terrific. The landscaping turned out terrific. I mean, very minimal, but just looks great, drought tolerant, everything else. We've been hearing about people wanting to go in Sahara and Charleston for years and put money into that area, but nobody actually goes and actually does anything, and you've actually proven yourself to go in and do a pretty, pretty good job with that. And I think the, I think the sign is just appropriate for that area being that, right across the street from Huntridge, and, you know, the thing about the sign that I like better than the existing sign that's out there is the existing sign that's on the corner and goes all the way down to the ground, also creating site visibility issues as you're making the corner, going off of Charleston onto Maryland Parkway, and your sign where it says, "Circle K Unlimited Gas Lane, Cash Price Video Gaming," it looks like it's elevating about eight feet in there or so, and so it actually gives you more pedestrian visibility, or visibility for the pedestrians in that area. And so, I like what you're doing, and I think it's bringing part of our history back to that little corridor, and so you'll see my support.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tucson.
I love it. I grew up in this area. I used to play at Circle Park, and I used to go to the Huntridge Theater, and I was always riding my bike around there, and it just makes, it just makes my heart feel good seeing that someone's going in there and redoing this area, because it's a beautiful area, it really is. And like I said, I grew up here, and I love this, and I think you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate that.
All right, Commissioner Rush.
Same. I'm just piling on with my kudos to say that I went to the Huntridge Theater my whole life growing up, and I love this area, and I love downtown, and I'm trying to redevelop properties downtown, too, so congrats on a great design. I love what you're doing. I think you're bringing a huge enhancement to that area, and I hope it brings more.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Vice Chair Cherry.
Through the chair, if there's no more comments, prepared to make a motion.
Please do.
Item number 53, VAR 71970, make a motion for approval.
Okay, thank you. Motion's on the floor, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action. I'll appeal to the City Clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. Moving on to item 54, VAR 71971, applicant owner, Brian and Jennifer Isom, for possible action on a request for variance to allow an 18-foot rear yard setback where 30 feet is required for a proposed two-story balcony addition at 9813 Guiding Light Avenue, Ward 6, Fiori. Staff recommends denial. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by proposing a balcony addition that will encroach into the required rear yard setback area. Since no unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented that would prevent the applicant from adhering to the minimum requirements of Title 19, staff is recommending denial of the request. Please note additional letters of support and protest have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. And considering this is item 54, and we have about over 50 protests or approvals, and I see a ton of people here wanting to talk tonight, I'm going to ask the applicant to come up, give a presentation, and then ask each person to try to limit in their comments to one minute. So if you have something to say, maybe let everybody else go first, and then you can maybe hit the points that they didn't hit, so. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you guys for your time tonight. My name is John Reese. I'm with Green Care Designs LLC. It's located at 6807 West Gary Avenue. I'm here on behalf of Brian and Jennifer Isom. Their address is 9813 Guiding Light Avenue. They asked me to read, they weren't able to be here. They had to go out of town. They had booked tickets prior, and they weren't aware of the date. They're stating that they're simply looking to build a small patio extension and want to have the roof of the patio as a decking area with a railing. The deck is to be less than 120 square feet in total, none of which is to be enclosed. The homeowner has followed all the processes with the HOA, and it has been approved by the HOA. No part of the deck is to be within 30 feet of the property line on either side of the yard. There would still be an 18-foot to the back wall that is, where there's no direct neighbor, is backing up to an area of desert that is not used, and it's not part of the, part of the design development there. Let's see here. None of the, none of the patio cover will be visible from any of the neighborhood street area. So the only variance being requested is a distance to the rear of the back wall, where, again, there is no direct neighbor behind the home. The homeowner asked that this variance be approved in a consistent fashion with similar requests that have come before the commission. And once again, they just want to reiterate that it's been approved by the HOA, and they've followed all the processes and gone through everything with them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
If you don't mind taking a seat over here in the corner, and, not in the corner, but just on inside. And this is a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm Larry Schultz. I'm the Vice President and Secretary of the Marbella Community Association, and I'm here on behalf of the association. I know in your online packet, you have some of our materials, but they're not in color, so I've brought copies for each of the commissioners. If I can provide it to you right now for distribution to the commissioners. I will go through this package very quickly, because I realize the hour is late.
Yes.
Okay, first of all, just by way of clarification, let me make it abundantly clear, this requirement has never been submitted to the homeowners' association, nor has it ever been approved. I wasn't sure if I was hearing that it was approved earlier, but I wanted to clarify that. Having said that, I'd like to use the projector here. Is it automatic?
It's automatic.
Okay.
And you have a couple of people that might want to give you some of their time.
All right, so let me start going through this. First of all, the Marbella Community Association is a community of all single-story homes that has not been finalized yet. It's still under final development, and it should be done-done by January. This proposed architectural modification is not in harmony with the association. Now, having said that, the second-story balcony, and I know time is short, if you can look at the chart here, which hopefully is on your screen here, you could see that the property outlined in purple here is the property in question, 9813 Guiding Light, and from that property, you do have views, because it's a high elevation within the community, you do have views eastbound, westbound, and southbound. That has views, when elevated, of approximately 15 homes, and all the people that bought homes in this community bought homes because they wanted single-story homes and the attendant privacy of single-story homes. Across the street, on the other side of Deer Springs, there are two communities. One is Connor Hills, developed by Ryland, by Richmond American, and another Ryland Development. Those are mixed-use communities with rooftop decks, mixed, one story, a second story. The people who bought homes in Marbella paid a premium for those homes, because they wanted to live in a single-story community, and they would, this, this project would totally compromise that intent and their investment, and would also impair the decorum and the architectural design of the community. So I'm going to wrap up now. Basically, in the applicant's summary, they provide a statement where they say, and you have that in your packets, there would be no ill effect to the community. I hope it's clear from my presentation and that of my fellow homeowners is that this proposed project would absolutely, positively have an ill effect on the community, and I'm just hard-pressed to understand how somebody could put that in a submission to the Planning Commission. So with that, we urge you to deny this application in its totality. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, and I let you go on a little bit longer than I said, but I figured that you had a lot to say.
Well, I'm representing the association.
I'm just going to ask everyone to not repeat the same comments that you already made tonight, but I encourage everybody to come up. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Chandra Cascone. I live at 6825 Cold Desert Street in the Marbella community. We moved from a multi-level home situation in the west side of town to the northwest, specifically in this development, because it was sold as an all-single-story development. Anyone in Vegas understands how cool that is, if you want to live in a single-story planned community. This proposed two-story balcony would be a detriment to my home, as my, I would lose all privacy, all privacy in my backyard, as being one of the homes directly affected by this proposal. I can only hope that you guys will hear us and deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good evening.
Good evening. Deborah Cornheiser. I live at 9726 Guiding Light Avenue, the same street that the proposed development is on, and we are very much opposed to it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good evening. Greg Rogers, 9817 Guiding Light. I've returned the postcard notice and emailed a letter opposing the variance. I'm here now publicly to voice my opposition. As the next-door neighbor home to this variance, we request, or we consider it a direct invasion of our privacy. This two-story addition would have a direct line of sight into our entire backyard. We have spent a significant sum of money to install a swimming pool and backyard landscaping that provides privacy for us and our family to enjoy. This two-story addition would compromise our privacy and have a negative impact to our current and future property values. The variance is not something that we thought we would ever have to be concerned with in a single-story-only community. I respectfully request you deny this request and all variations for any two-story structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. 6825 Cold Desert. My name is Dennis Cascone. I'm here to request that you deny this request. So many of the things have been covered. The only thing I would add is that it would materially change the look of the community, and that is not the grounds that we purchased these homes on, so...
I appreciate, appreciate your comments and being short. Thank you.
Patricia Hay, 9805 Blistering Sun, and I live in...
And I live in the Marbella community, and I want to reiterate what everybody else has said. I also want to state that most of our homes have the beautiful, open, sliding glass door, so it opens up the whole back of the home. The proposed balcony would then look in these homes, directly into their homes, and I think that's awful. It's not what we had planned, and it is a single-story community. Let's keep it that way. Please deny this request.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Good evening.
Scott Hay, ninety-eight oh-five Blistering Sun. Just reiterate my wife's statements and hope you can deny this request.
Hey, thank you so much. Good evening.
Steve Kronk, ninety-seven thirty Summer Bliss Avenue, Marbella community. I strongly oppose.
Thank you.
Craig Ash, sixty-eight thirty-two Velvet Snow Street, and we strongly oppose this.
Thank you so much.
Hello. Mark Cornheiser, ninety-seven twenty-six Guiding Light Avenue. I am also, like Larry, a board member of the association. I am the treasurer, and I agree, there was nothing proposed. This was not approved by the HOA. It has never been brought to us. Also, I have here a statement that I signed, everyone else signed. As you know, there's no guarantee of a view, and this is just trying to add on a view. Guiding Light was the first street that was built in this association. There's ninety homes. They could have picked out a different home. They could have picked out a home closer to Deer Springs that would have a view, but they chose not to. Also, in our architectural guidelines, it says that all work must be in a manner consistent, and we have over ninety homes. No one has asked for a variance of any type, certainly not as extreme as this, where thirty feet is a required setback, and they're asking for a reduction of almost half to eighteen. So, as my other colleagues have said, I hope that you deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name's Earl Cherry, ninety-seven oh-one Summer Bliss Avenue. Just ask that you deny this application.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am.
Janice Chapman, ninety-seven twenty-nine Guiding Light Avenue, representing my husband as well, who's in Afghanistan. We strongly oppose this, and we live three houses down from it. I'm sure when he comes back from overseas, he is not going to be happy to hear about this proposal of a second-story balcony. That is not why we bought in that community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
Hello. My name is Lynn Cherry. I live at ninety-seven oh-one Summer Bliss Avenue, and my concern is, yes, that we are a single-story, but what will this eventually do? If this is approved, it'll open a can of worms for other people to do other things, and we'll all be affected. So we just ask you that you would consider our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask applicant to come back up here. I want to say I greatly appreciate all the neighbors coming out, staying with us all night long, and for y'all actually, being brief, and at this late hour, and just being very, very concise with your points. So thank you so much. I'm going to give you three or four minutes for rebuttal, if you need it. If not, I'm going to turn it over to planning commission, and we're going to ask you maybe a few questions.
You can ask the questions right now.
Okay. We're going to start with Commissioner Carr.
Thank you. So help me understand, you stood in front of us, and you said that this item was approved by the HOA. And then, there, every single neighbor and a member of the board of the HOA stated that this has not been submitted to the HOA, and that they have not seen it, and it has not been approved. So help me understand where the disconnect is. Because I would hate to think that you would come in front of this board and not be truthful to us.
Absolutely not. It was my understanding that it was approved from the homeowners. We asked the homeowners to turn in paperwork. We give them the plans. We design, you know, the yard and the pool and the landscaping, patio covers, everything. Give them all the paperwork, and then ask them to fill everything out and turn it into the HOA. And then we don't start anything until they let us know that it's been approved. And via email, they had let us know that it was approved.
So you're saying that the owners told you it was approved?
Correct.
But obviously, it was not, correct?
I don't know that for a fact. I mean, if they're on the board and they're saying that it wasn't approved, then that's something that I would need to look into.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Toussaint?
Well, I live in a one-story community, and there's a hundred and thirty-two doors in our community. And I know that if somebody, one of my neighbors, said that they were going to do something like this, I don't think any of them would be very happy. And I know if I lived in this community, I wouldn't be very happy with it either. So you're not going to see my approval on this tonight.
I understand.
You know, I think you have some very nice renderings and this and that, and it would be really nice to have, but I also have to understand, when we have this much, this many neighbors coming out that bought in a single-story community, that felt that it was going to be a single-story community, and even though it's nice to have things now and then, you know, we've got, kind of, got to listen to our neighbors and what they say. So I don't know if I could really support this project, but I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Cherry and see what he has to say, or Commissioner DeSalvio.
I stand with the rest of the commission. I mean, not having an HOA approval, I mean, that's a basic. It's, without that, I can go nowhere, so I won't be supporting the application.
Commissioner DeSalvio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have received numerous amounts of opposition to this, and again, I'm not aware of any HOA approval that was drilled into me probably a hundred times in the last three days, so it's not harmonious and compatible to this community, and therefore, I would entertain a motion if there's no other counsel person for denial.
I understand your position.
All right. Looking for a motion, there's no other comments.
I'd like to make that motion for denial on item fifty-four, VAR seventy-one-nine-seven-one.
There's a motion for denial on item fifty-four. A yes notes for denial. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will move forward to the city council on January seventeen, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to item fifty-five and fifty-six. Item fifty-five, SUP seven-one-nine-two-four. Applicant, WFTLV zero-six LLC, owner, KRG Las Vegas Centennial Center LLC, for possible action on a request for special use permit for a proposed four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-two-square-foot liquor establishment tavern with seven-hundred-and-ninety-six square feet of outdoor seating area with a waiver to allow zero-foot distance separation from a school where four-hundred feet is required at seven-nine-three-zero West Tropical Parkway, Suite one-ten, Ward six, Fiori. Staff recommends approval. Item number fifty-six, SUP seven-one-nine-two-six, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed gaming establishment restricted use, Ward six, staff recommends approval. Can we get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site is an eighteen-acre shopping center designed to accommodate a variety of uses, including the ones proposed. Although the shopping center shares a property line with a public school, there is no direct access between the school and the shopping center, and staff finds the proposed uses can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner, and recommends approval of both applications. Please note additional letters of support have been received since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Matt Flandermeyer, one thousand South Rampart, Suite twenty-one. I'm here representing the applicant. It's a Wahoo's fish taco. There is one location in the city and two others in the county. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. We did a few things in order to get to this place. We, representative of the landlord, contacted the school's dean and asked if they had any opposition to us being there. They stated that there was none. We had a town hall meeting. There was nobody, nobody turned out to oppose. And then, we want to also thank the staff. They did an excellent job in helping us through this process. So if there's any questions, happy to answer them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. This was known as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Sir, if I can ask you to step back for a moment? Good evening, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Joshlin Steele. I'm at seven-seven-zero-one West Tropical Parkway. I'm the regional leasing manager on behalf of the landlord, and I approve this submission.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this over to Commissioner Quinn. Oh, okay. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Carr. Thank you.
I'm confused on how staff can find it to approve this when there's a zero-foot distance separation from a school, where there's five-hundred feet is required. And I have, I don't believe that I've seen staff make a recommendation for approval where there has been a zero-foot separation from a school on anything, when there is a requirement for separation, gaming establishment, tavern, packaged liquor, wine, whatever the case may be. So that's the first thing I need to try to understand.
Commissioner, through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
On this site plan, if you look at the screen, where this location is, it is within a large shopping center site. The school is immediately adjacent to that site, however, not adjacent to the use itself. There are already other uses that are taverns located on the site, so this was, this use would not increase the intensity or the impact of those other similar uses, and that's why staff is recommending approval.
So within this shopping center, you're saying that there are other taverns that are serving liquor within the shopping center?
That is correct.
And so there's two taverns already in there. I'm looking within the red zone. Already, and we're going to put a third in there. It seems to be pretty intense for such a short area. You know, it's not like it's a downtown gaming establishment, like we're talking about Las Vegas Boulevard, or Fremont Street, or Boulder Highway, or whatever. It seems like that's a lot of liquor in a very small period, in a very, very short, small area, I should say. And I'm somewhat surprised that we would approve another one to go in there.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Just for the record, this is, there's mostly restaurants with alcohol, like a sushi loco, there's a BJ's close by, there's a Mexican restaurant, there's a Robins, a Red Robin's. There's an assortment of restaurants in there. I don't believe, within that development, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, of any other gaming inside that area, other than possibly the BJ's.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. There is a Dottie's at that shopping center location?
Okay. That's right. That's right. Okay. I know for us, this is a perfect fit for what they're looking to do. That's why, you know, I stand in support of it, because in my eyes, that is the perfect location, and we would definitely like to have a Wahoo's in Ward six.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Toussaint?
Well, I'm in the shopping center a lot, and I think it would be a great addition, so I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one point of clarification. If you guys are there a lot, I'm not there a lot. So are the other taverns, there are food establishments? So there's a BJ's, you said, and then there's another one?
Through the chair, there is like a sushi loco, a Red Robin, a Macao's. It's more restaurant-style with the alcohol than just a tavern.
Tavern, yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to entertain a motion for item fifty-five, SUP seven-one-nine-two-four, for approval.
Thank you. Motion for approval, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to entertain a motion for item fifty-six, the SUP seven-one-nine-two-six.
Motion is on the floor for approval. Item fifty-six, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, both items fifty-five and fifty-six are final action unless appealed to the city clerk within ten days.
All right. Unfortunately, I think the last thing anybody wants to hear is that Vice Chair Cherry just told me that we needed to take a break for ten minutes. You know, it's city regulations, every two hours, we have to take a break, so anyways, we'll be on brief recess. Maybe we can keep it down to five minutes this time. Good evening. This plan and commission is called to, called back to order. Moving on to item number 60, SUP 71979, applicant WIRAR LLC, owner Canyon Plaza LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,174 square foot beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment use within an existing general retail use, convenience store at 6390 West Lakeview Boulevard, Ward 5 Barlow. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's requesting approval of a special use permit for a beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment within a convenience store in an existing commercial development. The proposed use meets all requirements of Title 1912 and can be operated in compatible manner with the surrounding adjacent uses. Staff is recommending approval. Please note there are additional letters of protest and one in support since publication.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Lucy Stewart, 1930, Billards Center Circle, representing the applicant, and Sam?
Good evening. Sam Caju, 1,000 South Torrey Lane.
And Mr. Caju is the, would be the owner and operator of the service. And this is a site of, that I think ever since this building was built, had a convenience store with gas pumps, and sold, of course, beer and wine as part of it. I guess the previous operator didn't really know how to operate very well, and, and have sold things to minors. I think he got caught several times. Mr. Caju has actually other, three other locations in town, and one of, I think, he's got policies and procedures that are set for his employees, and he's very strict about making sure that you don't sell to minors. He's got cameras all around the inside and the outside of the building, and so, if he sees that somebody like was talking to kids and then comes inside to buy beer or wine, he makes sure that if they, if he goes out and sees them, they actually stop it, and then those people are actually forbidden from ever coming into a store again. And on occasion, he does call Metro. So, we believe with his expertise, the issues that occurred in the past won't happen in this case, and we appreciate staff's recommendation for approval and respectfully request approval.
Thank you. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission for discussion and possible actions, starting with Commissioner Krier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Since this was a convenience store before, and, you know, it's had this entitlement, I don't see any, any issue with it, I'm gonna vote for approval.
Can we get a motion?
It would be my pleasure.
Thank you.
Item 60, SUP 71979, I move for approval.
Thank you. Motion for approval on the floor, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action.
Thank you.
Unless appealed to the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. Item 64, SUP 71985, applicant owner Arthur K. and Julia P. Chan, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an existing short-term residential rental, rental use at 4210 Bussett Court, Ward 1. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's requesting approval of a special use permit for an existing short-term residential rental use. The existing use was approved and licensed in late 2015 prior to the requirement for a special use permit, condition of use verification or distance separation from a similar use. Since that time, it has continued to operate without any enforcement action or neighborhood complaints. In June of 2017, ordinance 6585 was adopted and required all short-term residential rentals meet the current requirements of Title 1912, including a special use permit if applicable. This location requires approval of a special use permit due to the number of bedrooms and the fact that it is not owner-occupied during all rental periods. It does meet the distance separation requirement of 660 feet, as the nearest similar use is slightly over 700 feet away. As the use meets all requirements of 1912 and has continuously operated since 2015 with no enforcement issues, staff is recommending approval. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and one in support since publication.
Thank, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Arthur Chan, 6130 West Flamingo. Nathan Burley, 2752 Sunlight Creek Street, Henderson, Nevada.
Thank you.
So, I have slides that I prepared that's on the overhead.
Okay. We have a microphone in the middle.
Just didn't want to block the slide. So, as the staff report said, we're a single-family home. We're one of five houses on a private cul-de-sac. We're existing, conditionally licensed. We've been operating since 2015. We don't know of any enforcement issues. As the staff report said, we've actually reached out to the city, and we've done a public records request, and it's come back without any incidences. We are current with all our room, monthly room tax remittance to the city, and in fact, we're actually overpaid. As of end of November, we received a letter from the city auditor, and we're here because we're required to come before this board, before July 2019. I have a letter from the auditor that shows that we're overpaid. So, we believe that we're responsible operators. We believe we're different. We're very process-oriented in the way we do things. We have a clean two-year track record, and we generally do things by the book, and I'll kind of go over some of these items in more detail in the following slides. We've been sensitive to our neighbors. We're, I'll admit that we're more in contact with all the neighbors on our immediate court. We know all the neighbors on our court and cul-de-sac. We never hid that from our immediate neighbors. We had some skeptics initially when we first set out to do this in 2015. We've turned those skeptics into supporters, and in fact, two of them have, the residences in two of those houses have submitted letters in support, and they should, one of them, I noticed, was posted publicly, and I don't know if the other one was posted yet. We generally have a good relationship with people on our street, and by that, what that, well, I'll kind of get some, into some of those details later, but by that, I mean, they'll pick up the phone and call us if there are any issues, police action in the neighborhood, or just anything that they feel that we should know about. On our private cul-de-sac, we have supportive everybody. We, my partner Nathan and I, we've either reached out directly to them, we've shook their hand, we've been invited into their houses, and they've either have told us that they're gonna be supporting us, or they've written a letter and copied us some letter. Our track record, per city code, we have our phone number for complaints posted on the front of the property. We've never received a phone call on a complaint. We're licensed, so we're known to the city, and we're regulated by the city. We've never heard from code complaints. And as a gist of the general operations, we've been reviewed 43 times on VRBO with 100% five-star rating. And our public, public records request, we have a copy of that, but I guess city staff report also had concurred what that letter says. We do things by the book. We were one of the first licensed operations in city that we know about, based on numbers from the VVRA and business licensing. We estimate that we were one of the first 20 or 30 licensees. We didn't obtain the license through code enforcement action. We actually went out and seeked approval before we took on even our first guest, and I think we talked about the neighbors. We have proper insurance. Licensing and STR is not, or insuring an STR is not very easy. Normally, with most insurers, commercial insurers, when you tell them that you're running a short-term rental, more than likely, they won't even touch the deal. You just simply can't get insurance. We actually had to go to a non-admitted insurer. We went to Lloyds of London in order to get insurance. Before the city's recently enacted code that requires short-term rentals to carry a large amount of liability insurance, we independently opted to carry double that amount before that, that requirement was in effect. We also carry a workers' comp policy, and that's just because running a short-term rental, you have various people that come in and out of the house, and above and beyond whatever their license, their insurance may, may cover them, we wanted to make sure we're doubly covered on that side. We pulled permits for works done, for work done on the house. One of our first actions was to get the smoke alarms compliant with fire code. I believe there's an error on the staff report where it says that that permit was in, pulled in 2014. It was actually pulled in 2015. I have a copy of that permit, if anybody needs that. And the next three bullet items, I'll go in a little bit more detail in the following slides, but we believe it's a unique property. We make extensive use of technology, and we do a lot of guest screening and education. So, the unique property features that we believe help mitigate issues. We're on a private cul-de-sac. We're on a half-acre lot, so there's a lot of separation between us and other properties. This next one is actually very unique. Over half the square footage of the house is in the basement. So, we have five of the bedrooms that are downstairs. We also located any AV equipment. We have a little workout room and a billiards table. All of that is actually located in the basement, in the unlikely event that any noise generated by guests will cause any issues. We're well aware that parking is a big issue with short-term rentals. So, on this particular property, we have a very long driveway, and we also have a horseshoe driveway, too. So, this would accommodate any guest vehicles without any impact to the public streets. Just the technology, just talk on technology. We run three cameras in the house. We, we educate and inform our guests that they're there. They're there as much to monitor the property when it's vacant, but it's also to encourage good behavior from the guests. We weren't satisfied with any of the off-shelf software, so we actually had, we wrote custom software to do the alerting. We do sound detection, so over 85 decibels, we'll get a notification, and we can log in and look at, and look, look at the history of the sound levels. We have remote control lights, irrigation. In, in the interior of the house, we have passive infrared motion detection. We can lock/unlock the doors from remote. The guest screening and education, we think is pretty important. So, we don't allow instant booking. We want to talk to every client that actually has an interest in staying at the property. We want the purpose of the visit. If anybody says the P-word, that's party. We generally will pass on the opportunity. We make, our guests send a copy of their identification, and this is sometimes, I mean, we generally want to just know who we're dealing with. But oftentimes, we'll get people that balk at it, and if they don't want to share that with us, then I think that's a screening technique that's, that's worked. We have a comprehensive contract with all the ordinances and the rules that the city has set forth. We have an unusually high deposit, and we believe that that's a screening, screening mechanism. We've had a number of inquiries for people-
Sir, if I may just interject real quick.
Yes.
And I appreciate you bringing all this up. It sounds like you're doing a great job with guest screening and education, video cameras and things such as that. That's more along the lines of what business licensing would be looking at?
Okay.
We're looking at it from a planning perspective. Is it compatible and harmonious with the neighborhood, and can you be compatible and harmonious with the neighborhood? So, I think you're hitting a lot of these points that, that are good points to us. But could we just speak briefly on-
Okay.
Is it compatible with the neighborhood or not?
Understood. So, we post signs and ordinances in, in the property. And it takes us to, to the end. So, we believe that our measures have, have made this operation, the process-oriented approach has made it very smooth without incident. We've had no complaints that we were able to find. We're an existing operation. We're not a new licensee. We're not adding to the load of the short-term rentals that I know a lot of people are very sensitive about. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This was noted as a public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Good evening.
Susan Wayne Scott. I live at 4350 Bussett Court, and I wasn't planning on taking time, but since I heard there were protest letters, I'm in support of this, and so is my husband. We're a neighbor. They're great. They're exceptional. So, I hope that you approve this one.
I appreciate that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Marco Rizzo, 525 Ruby Vista Court, on behalf of the Vegas Vacation Rental Association. Art Chan is a member of our association, and clearly, I think you can see that he's a, a good operator, a classic good operator. He's already licensed, already paying room tax. They operate by the book. They've got all the technology, obviously have the support of their neighbors. So, we believe this is a compatible use. They, they checked all the boxes. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, turn this over to the planning commission, starting with Commissioner Quinn.
Thank you. I just have a quick question for staff. Usually, in the application for a special use permit for an existing short-term rental, it doesn't usually say that it's the only one within 660 feet, or is that at the previous application? I mean, not in this one. I mean, I just noticed there's, there's no mentions of the ordinance in this, of this application, as written.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. There is no waiver request, and, and the nearest similar use is, I want, it's just over 700 feet, I believe. It's like 700, 700.
That's, that's fine. We just always, it's always been in there in the past where it says, you know, this is the only one within 660 feet, and it's my personal opinion. I like to see that on there, because that's about the first thing that pops into my eye. But anyway, if nobody has any questions or comments this evening on this application that was so eloquently delivered and so on- that was so eloquently delivered and so honestly read, we wish you a lot of luck tonight as I'm going to make the motion for approval on SUP seven-one-nine-eight-five, putting a one-year administrative review on that to make sure that all your ducks stay in the row that they've been in. Thank you.
Thank you. A motion's on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote.
Is that considered amended then?
I was gonna add a condition, one, a condition of a one-year review.
Administrative review.
Just to make sure there's no code enforcement violations in the next year.
That would be amended, Chairman. I don't think it's a current condition, so it is an amended condition.
Yeah.
So just for clarification, the condition we read, a one-year administrative required review shall be conducted from the date of issuance of business license.
So is that conducted through business licensing?
Final action.
They'll come to you. If you don't hear from them, don't call, you know, you know that thing, don't call, don't answer. Yeah, don't worry. It's just something I would look. It's a way for us to keep an eye on them, you know, as they go forward, and we appreciate it.
Absolutely. I understand that.
Not looking forward to problems, but you never know.
Okay. Now, does that imply that we have to come before the commission again, or is that?
No, it's administrative.
Okay.
So you'll just talk to the city staff.
We hope not. Thank you very much.
If you come before us, that means they gave you a non-favorable review. So, all right, there's a motion on the floor with the added condition of a one-year administrative
And that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item is final action and allows appeal to the city clerk within ten days.
Thank you. Moving back to item fifty-two, as previously written to the record, and this is, well, since it's been a while, just to say it's for possible action on a request for variance to allow an existing accessory structure casita to have a one-foot setback from the rear and side yard property lines where three feet's required and to allow a one-foot separation from the main building where six feet's required. This applicant here. Seeing no applicant, would, I'm gonna open this up for public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. I already got the staff report earlier. And I'm gonna turn this over to Planning Commission for discussion and possible action. We can either vote on this item or hold this item in abeyance. Vice Chair, Chair, do you have any comments on this particular?
Through the chair, yeah. I'd like to see this go forward. I realize the applicant isn't here, but it's something, I think staff actually, staff does have this right with the denial, and that's what the motion is going to be for.
Okay. So I'll go ahead and take that as a motion for denial of item number fifty-two, VAR seven-one-nine-five-eight. Reminding everybody, a yes vote is for denial. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council on January seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Thank you. Moving on to Director's Business. Item sixty-five TXT, seven-two-zero-three-seven, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to amend Las Vegas Municipal Code nineteen-point-one-two relating to short-term residential rental use and to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendations. Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, this amendment will accomplish the following. Minimum special use permit requirement number eight, that requires a distance separation of six-hundred-and-sixty feet from a similar use, will be made a non-wavable requirement. A clarification regarding the method of calculating the measurement of this separation in regard to condominium and mixed-use developments is also included. It also establishes the ability to waive the distance separation of six-hundred-and-sixty feet from a similar use, but only when the two uses are separated by a street or highway public right-of-way that is at least one-hundred feet in width. And finally, it adds a non-wavable requirement for the applicant to hold a neighborhood meeting at least one week prior to the application being considered by the Planning Commission.
Thank you. This was a notice of public hearing. Anyone wanting to be heard, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Is this okay here?
Yes. If you could pull that mic over to you, though.
Oh, sorry. I'll just read a brief statement.
Okay.
My name's Isaac Pacconi. My wife and I live at one-fifty Las Vegas Boulevard at the Ogden Downtown. If our interpretation of the proposed STR amendments are correct, depicted by these checkmarks here, our group would support the Planning Commission in passing this amendment. The law on short-term rentals has been in place since the Ogden started selling as residences. As Commissioner Quinn pointed out at a previous meeting, the law has always only allowed one residence on this property parcel to be used as a short-term rental. Even one short-term rental jeopardizes government-backed loans, FHA, Fannie Mae, for example, which is one of the unique features of the Ogden Downtown. Fifteen licensed units would assuredly disqualify a building, slimming the buyer pool and residential investment in downtown. There are currently thirty-one unlicensed still operating. My wife and I love downtown. We love the master plan for downtown, and we understand and know that downtown needs more residents there, permanent residents, who have an investment in how downtown develops. The Ogden, although it's amongst many hotels, is a residence. It's a community, and we want to continue to develop this community feel in the Ogden. We are all invested heavily in downtown in becoming residents. We care about the future of downtown. So we would ask that if our interpretation is correct, that you guys would please approve this amendment and continue supporting no distance variances in the future for the Ogden so that we can continue to have residents who want to live and support and have a safe building downtown. We do not want the Ogden to turn into an unsafe Airbnb hotel. And I'd also like to just put this in for the record.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if that's right. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Good evening, sir.
Yes, my name's Larry Swafford. I live at one-fifty Las Vegas Boulevard North at the Ogden also. I have the same concerns. I live there. I want to live downtown. I want to support the community and the redevelopment of the community. The Airbnb issue has become a big issue in the building, and I have several concerns. Now, I understand under the law, the way the law is written right now, the one Airbnb that has been approved for the building should be the only Airbnb, but now I'm hearing that the, there will be a drive for distance waivers for everyone else who wants to operate BMBs in the building. That's my first concern. My second concern is, I support the proposed amendment as written with the exception of, if I understand this right, point four, where it says this short-term, this distance is measured horizontally from the nearest property lines of the short-term residential rental use. Horizontal and vertical was never in the original wording, and I'm afraid that this may be opening the door to putting a horizontal meaning every floor in a twenty-five-floor building. Twenty-five Airbnbs in the building will just devastate the homeowners. We're not happy with this. It is not. It's becoming a bad place to live. There are such contentious words going on in the building. So keeping it short, I hope this is not what this is specifying. We need to stick to the six-hundred-and-sixty-foot rule. It protects the building. The building is getting permanent homeowners. That really is what a downtown that needs to develop needs. You gotta have people living there, committed to living there, and enjoying it. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
I was gonna yield to him.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Larry Hockes, one-five-zero North Las Vegas Boulevard, unit eleven-zero-one. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I would like to express my support for this proposal by reading a two-and-a-half-minute commentary, if I may, please.
Sure.
Okay. For good reason, some municipalities and communities chose to prohibit short-term rentals. Other major cities like San Francisco, Santa Monica, New York approved STRs, but with one overwhelming restriction, that the host be a full-time resident. They also levied heavy fines up to a thousand dollars for violators operating without a license. City of Las Vegas elected to authorize short-term rentals and drafted a well-written ordinance code. However, the approval of waivers specifically when the host does not have to be a full-time resident and distance separations less than six-hundred-and-sixty feet has diluted the code and opened the floodgates for SUPs. Now the city is being petitioned to approve STRs in condominiums and family, multifamily homes, which forms a new set of responsibilities. Unlike a single-family structure where most risks are confined to an isolated area, condominium risk factors are intensified due to the fallout associated with high occupancy. It no longer affects one home or one lot, but hundreds of homes and residents in a confined area. In high-density housing, one fire can consume an entire floor, damage upper and lower floors. I witnessed a fire last year at the three-story Parsons Place apartment at six-twenty-four East Stewart, where it was reported that a family was working on a hobby project that involved flammable materials. That one unit was destroyed, but the entire building suffered scoring and smoke damage. In the hypothetical situation, if a fire is accidentally ignited by a resident in a condominium, the city would be immune of responsibility. However, if that fire was attributed to a short-term matter, and it caused extensive property damage and is followed by a class action and personal lawsuit, then the city might be implicated by a second party because it authorized and issued the permit. Most HOACCRs are legally written to specifically indemnify and protect the owners, investors, board of directors, managers, and employees of the association from liability, making them practically untouchable. In regards to this agenda item, I would hope the commission would err in protecting the city from potential adversity instead of yielding to special interests and investors, speculators. The Planning Commission is making a prudent decision to amend the existing STR guidelines as they pretend to condominiums, and hopefully the City Council will see it in the same light. We respectfully appreciate your decision to amend the existing STR codes.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. Susan Wayne Scott, forty-three fifty Basak Court. I'll keep it short. I supported my neighbors and their SUP because they are exceptional. This is effectively putting commercial use in the heart of many residential neighborhoods and buildings. I believe that this was an interesting experiment in the sharing economy, and I believe that after spending this time with you all today, it's failing. We moved here from the city of North Las Vegas two years ago. Had I known that this was legal in the city of Las Vegas, I would have excluded it. This is becoming a nightmare. Residents who have lives and jobs are being forced to watch your agenda postings, to watch for the abeyances coming back. We have to hope that things land in our mailbox in a timely fashion, and we can spend the evening with you all. I don't know how you put the genie back in the bottle, but while I think the amendments are a good step forward, they don't go far enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jonas Wolverton. I'm a resident of the Ogden, one-fifty Las Vegas Boulevard North, unit ten-eleven, and I just wanted, I just bought my unit in the Ogden. I'm a circus sleigh performer, creative type. I love downtown. I love it. I'll try to keep it brief. Just want to let you guys know that I moved into the Ogden on October fifth, and that's when I found out that the Las Vegas shooter had rented three Airbnbs in the Ogden, and that was very disconcerting, and even more disconcerting was that I found out there's thirty-one unlicensed Airbnbs operating currently in the Ogden. And this is a home that I bought to live with my son. He's four years old. I want to see him thrive downtown. I want him to be proud to live downtown. And currently, unfortunately, there's a lot of people who come in to the Ogden for a weekend, and there's a lot of partying, a lot of wear and tear on our facilities, and it's a very unpleasant feeling to not know who your neighbors are. So I would support the amendments. I think Isaac said it best. I support what he said, and we're definitely, you know, proud to live in the Ogden, and we just want to make it, we know that the long-term value of the Ogden, the property value, is going to be through continued owner residence, and that ultimately, if we just keep doing short-term rentals, it's going to devalue the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Linda Rafael. I also live at the Ogden, one-fifty Las Vegas Boulevard North. I've been a resident of the Ogden for about four months, and I'm a licensed Nevada-registered nurse. I purchased a home at the Ogden in a trending neighborhood, and I was hoping to live peacefully in my home, get to know my neighbors, and experience a close-family-type atmosphere. Shortly after moving in, the one-October massacre occurred. Subsequently, Sheriff Lombardo reported that the shooter had actually been in my home, my neighborhood, not in my unit specifically, but in my building. He also referred to the Ogden multiple times as a hotel, and I can certainly now appreciate his labeling. The Ogden is trashed after these transient guests are allowed in. We don't have adequate parking. If someone breaks glass in our pool area, the entire pool and/or spa has to be drained, cleaned, and refilled at the cost of the homeowners. The Ogden does not have staff, rules and regulations, or security to manage short-term rental occupants, nor should they have to on the backs of the homeowners. The downtown area is abundant with hotels, rooms, security, and the staff to manage these transient guests. The Ogden is an exclusive property in the downtown area. Please do not allow the Ogden to become just another hotel. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, ma'am.
Nancy Seamers, one-five-zero Las Vegas Boulevard North. Short-term tenants are destructive to the Ogden building, detrimental to the social fabric of our community, and caused me to feel unsafe walking from my unit as there are transient people coming and going. Please do not allow more than one short-term rental license in our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Donald Seamers, one-fifty Las Vegas Boulevard North, unit nineteen-oh-three. Current city rules allow one short-term rental in the building. Please don't change that and turn the Ogden into a hotel. The majority of unit owners in the building that want to turn their unit into a short-term rental live out of state. They do not live in the building and call it home. Their only objective is to rent the units out on a short-term basis and make money. For us owners that call the Ogden home, it is very disturbing to have strangers wandering out throughout the building all the time. I have seen them put trash outside the door in the hallway. I guess they expect housekeeping to come by and pick it all up. Please don't turn the Ogden into a hotel.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I really do appreciate your time tonight. With all due respect to the Ogden, there are many reasons that a short-term rental is or is not suitable for a particular neighborhood. Making the separation unwavable and permanent, what that actually does is it closes the conversation, and I think that's what we all want, is we want conversations with our neighbors without allowing for the idea that maybe there is a place, there's a situation, there's a use where the six-sixty waiver comes into mind. So just asking you not to close that, and that's all this amendment is doing, is just closing the idea that the six-sixty, making it unwavable. Secondly, obviously, our group advocates for licensing all short-term rentals. With the fixed six-sixty separation, what that's going to do is it's going to limit the number of short-term rentals citywide to a very, very small group. It's, like I say, not going to even allow for more uses when that applies in that particular neighborhood. So again, it's closing down the conversation. Making everybody else go underground, automatically they cannot comply the law, even if they wanted to. The idea is they can't come before you, ask for a waiver, and remedy the situation. It makes it not possible. So I think mixing the six-sixty separation by making it unwavable, I think that's a bad idea because it closes the conversation. And lastly, just about the neighborhood meeting, here's the thing. If you're a good operator, you're already talking with your neighbors. You're talking with the people behind you, in front of you, to the right, to the left. If they're in opposition, then God help you, you know, it's probably not going to work. So it just makes sense, obviously, to work hand-in-hand with the people around you. The thing is, the neighbors have plenty of venues to express their concerns. They get notified by the notification. There's a giant billboard that goes in front of the use. They get to appear before Planning Commission. They get to appear before City Council. So there's lots of opportunities for the neighbors. I think the system we've established is very I think the system we've established is very clear and pretty straightforward. So I ask that you-
All right. I appreciate it.
Deny.
Thank you.
Good evening. Laura Dreya, Law Office of Jay Brown, 520 South Forest Street. As you may remember, at this time last year, a property could qualify for a conditional use permit, which means it would bypass this commission completely. Now, every property is coming for a special use permit, has public comment, some as we've just seen retroactively. So that said, since everything goes through public comment anyway, we believe that the 660-foot variance should remain an option to every site, even if it's just used by staff as a basis for denial. I've personally seen this variance approved by this commission only twice, but that doesn't mean that a unique circumstance won't present itself in the future. There are very few use permits in the city that don't allow applications for administrative remedies, so we hope that you keep this one open. Thank you.
Thank you. Soon-
Mr. Chairman?
I think you already spoke, sir.
Mr. Chairman? And just for the record, it's a waiver and not a variance.
Yes. Okay. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public here and turn this over to the Planning Commission for discussion and possible action. I'll go ahead and start just by saying that, you know, I didn't vote for the short-term residential rental use in the Ogden. And, you know, I remember Vice Chair Cherry, his comments were, "The places just aren't built for, you know, short-term rentals or rentals in general." I mean, they're built for residences and long-term rentals. But, I mean, personally, I mean, it's just, you approve one in a high-rise, and it's just impossible for you to be able to tell if somebody else takes a picture of their room, if it's the one that was actually approved or not, because they don't actually have to put their suite number down. So it just becomes a business license and nightmare, so I can understand why you'll have 31 of them in there, because you can't catch them all. And I don't know, I don't know how you solve that issue. So regardless of if it's wavable or not wavable, you know, I don't want to make this just about the Ogden, because it's applying to a lot of different projects. But personally, I don't like it when the city, I mean, blame me. It would be nice to have Item Number Nine, the distance separation requirement, set forth in requirement eight, maybe waived in accordance with provisions of LVMC 19.12.050, but only in connection with a proposed short-term residential rental that would be separated from an existence similar use by street or highway with a minimum right-of-way width of 100 feet. So basically, a whole bunch of language to state that it can only be wavable if you're on 100-foot right-of-way. You know, I always like to be able to have that, I always like to be able to have that option to have something come before us, and if something's not wavable, you know, something might not fit into a particular project or into an SDR, or SUP, or variance, but you can't even come and ask for, you know, a waiver, and not the Ogden, but anywhere. Yeah, this is a, this would be an easy cop-out for City Council and Planning Commission, just to say, "Hey, you can't even come and apply." And, you know, it would cut down our agendas by quite a bit, but, you know, honestly, we're appointed to do a job and look at each one of these items individually, and so I don't feel it's right to take away anybody's rights to come and ask for something. But that's just my opinion. Commissioner DeSalvio?
Mr. Chairman, I couldn't agree more. I mean, why would anybody want to tie their hands and make something, a recommendation of a non-wavable requirement? I mean, that's what our job is. Our job is that, and we all know that these short-term rentals, at least from my short experience on this as a commissioner, it's a case-by-case basis. And nobody, I'm sure nobody up here wants to see, you know, 30, 40 in a building, for sure. And I just think it would be an injustice if we actually went forward with this non-wavable requirement when it basically ties our hands from doing our job.
I agree. Thank you. Vice Chair Cherry?
Through the chair. You know, looking at this with the mixed-use development, the condominium, I just feel it's like fundamentally different than a residential home. You know, I'll give you an example. In the last 90 days at Soho where I lived, we've had, and we don't allow any short-term rentals, and it's a six-month lease minimum, we found two of these Airbnbs. One of them caused over $7,000 in damage to the common area, which now that person is probably going to have a felony on their record, and, you know, the HOA goes after the funds to recoup it if we can get it. In the meantime, the homeowners are stuck with this large bill. And that's one extreme case, but there's a host of other issues, from the pool to the garbage, to access with the garage, and that's just not in a high-rise. That's in a, to me, in any project, that there's condominiums, when you have to share the cost of a common area with your neighbor, and you want it to look nice and respectable. Once that person is out of that unit in that common area, it's very difficult to go after the homeowner. And so, you know, I look at this, and while I don't, I'd like to see that for the mixed-use, I don't agree that it should be that way for the residential units, just like you were stating, Commissioner DeSalvio was stating. And it's just something, down the street from the Ogden, there's neighborhoods where we've approved some STRs, and quite honestly, there's some that could probably work that are fairly close to that approval and not bother a neighbor anywhere, and would be great for downtown and great for the neighborhood. And so this would be difficult for me to support in its current state, because it knocks out that single-family home. But I do think we have to have something for mixed-use and condominiums, because it's just, I just don't think it has a place there, personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Roush?
I think we could all speak all night on this topic, because it's so varied and it's so difficult. And I agree with Commissioner Cherry that it's really a tough decision when you're talking about a high-rise versus a single-family dwelling unit. The separation factor works better in a single-family home than it does in a high-rise. It's harder to define, you're living in confined quarters in a high-rise, it's just a different animal. That said, I've done a lot of research on this myself. I've met with the people that are with the Short-Term Rental Association. They provided me data. I found data of my own. It becomes an enforcement issue, and that becomes a burden on the city in a very big way. And the city needs to make a decision in terms of, if you get into the business of allowing it at all, then you've got to decide how you're going to enforce it. And if you're going to enforce it, you have to enforce it fairly. In order to do that, I think it's very difficult, because I've heard Commissioner DeSalvio make a very excellent point at a prior meeting, that you put a red-and-white sign in your front yard, and you're now public enemy number one. You're going to get your house TP'd and egged and everything else, and your neighbors hate you and talk about you behind your back now, and it's a very difficult process. One solution to that process would be to not require SUPs for this, but let business licensing handle it with the guidelines. That's a very pro-business approach to doing it. But you lose a little bit of that modicum of control of making sure that you don't have these one-off incidences, like we talked about earlier tonight on Grand Island, where you've got mayhem. Again, the weak link in the chain on this is, again, not just the enforcement, but the operator. We've met with some excellent operators that are amazing, that have guidelines and books and enforcement, and interview people thoroughly, but the applicant on Grand Island tonight said that they interviewed people thoroughly and ended up with this strange group from Australia. And you can get a one-off like that, and you do everything you can to shut them down and kick them out, but now you've lost the confidence of your neighborhood. And at that point, I think you lose your license, and I don't think there's much choice that the city or we as a governing body have when it comes to that. So at the risk of not rambling too long, I think that we're all pretty split and divided on this, because I think that the way that this text amendment is written is very absolute. And I think it goes a little bit too far in one regard and not far enough in others. And there's probably not going to be a perfect solution until we work through this a little bit longer. But I think at this point, I'm not ready to approve this the way that it's written, but I do like that we're moving in a direction where we're trying to figure out a solution. So, clear as mud, I guess, but-
Thank you. Commissioner Chusant?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Roush. I think that when you're talking about condos and high-rises, it's a different animal than single-story homes or family residents. And I don't think that you can have the same rule for both, just because of the structure of it. So I agree with my fellow commissioners, and I'm not comfortable with approving this tonight, but I do believe we need to come up with something, and I'm just not exactly sure what that would be right now.
All right. Can we get a motion?
Motion, Roush.
You want to go? Vice Chair?
Can we get a motion with the recommendations to send to City Council?
Item Number 65, text amendment 72037, make a motion for denial.
Do you have any recommendations for City Council?
I do have a recommendation, that we separate the single-family home and find rules for the condominium and mixed-use projects.
So that would be a condition to-
That's just a recommendation to City Council. So there's a motion for denial? Yes, votes for denial? And that motion carries. That motion's denied, or carries.
Mr. Chairman, this item will move forward to City Council in ordinance form.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Item 67, TXT 72042, applicant owners study Las Vegas for possible action on a request to amend Las Vegas Municipal Code 19.16 and 19.18 relating to open space redevelopment and to provide for other related matters. Staff has no recommendation. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this item is one that staff has been working on at the request of City Council. Tonight, we are just proposing the Public Engagement Program requirements. It is anticipated that we would come back after the New Year with some additional language to address issues related to development standards for the repurposing of golf courses and open space. I do want to make clear that this proposed amendment would affect, again, the repurposing of existing parks, open space, and golf courses, not any that may exist in a plan but were never actually developed. So I want to make sure that that's clear. So the first part of the Public Engagement Program requirements is that the developer prepare what's called an alternative statement. And this is prepared by the developer and submitted to the residents in the area adjacent to the proposed repurposed golf course, park, open space. Essentially, it's to inform stakeholders and the city about what the developer's options and intentions are. And based on the current proposal, we do ask for a minimum of five alternative statements to be addressed. They include anything, for instance, has the developer examined whether there are any options to maintain the current facility and have it operated by someone else? Have they looked at other amenity options? So instead of going from a park to a retail center, did they look at doing some other kind of amenity for the area that's maybe not quite as active, or something like that, for example? The public engagement process does not negate or circumvent any CCNRs that may be applicable to a particular site. So if there are CCNRs, the developer will still need to address any requirements that are within those CCNRs, such as, you know, 50% plus one approval from the residents, or whatever that may be, in order for them to repurpose the site. Additionally, the public engagement process includes components for neighborhood meetings. Right now, we have in the proposed text amendment that there be at least two informational meetings. These would be done prior to the design workshops that I'll talk about in a second, that there be one in-person meeting once the public engagement process has wrapped up, that there be one neighborhood meeting once the applicant has actually submitted their formal application process, or their formal application for the public hearing process, so that basically the neighborhood has an opportunity to see what was submitted versus what was discussed in the prior meetings. And then there's been a discussion about, depending on the nature of the project, holding meetings that may be during the daytime as well as evening meetings, because we know sometimes it can be difficult for members of the public to attend a night meeting. As a part of this process, there would be design workshops. These would be, planning often thinks of these as charrettes, but in working with our advisory panel, that we term these as design workshops, there would be at least three design workshops, one that would work with adjacent property owners, one that would work with property owners that aren't adjacent but within the master development plan area or the special plan area, and then one that would work with adjacent neighborhood associations and business owners. Those are, it was felt by the policy advisory panel that those were three distinct audiences, and to get the best kind of input to hold three separate design workshops. The final piece of the Public Engagement Program is the summary report. The summary report will be prepared by the developer and submitted to the city as a part of their formal application submittal, and it details all the outreach that was conducted, what inputs were received, and how that input has been incorporated into the final design. Again, this is, the public engagement process will be submitted to staff for approval prior to implementing any of the steps, and the summary report is submitted as a part of the land use entitlements. And with that, I believe you have the text amendment, the draft language, and again, this is the first stage in what will be a two-part process to address the council direction from September of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. This was non-instance public hearing. Anyone want to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Chair Slavin and Commissioner, my name is Matt Walker. On behalf of the Southern Nevada Home Builders, 4175 South Riley Street, Unit 100, appreciate all staff's work, and have really enjoyed participating on the citizens advisory panel in regards to open space redevelopment. Appreciate staff's comments regarding that these aren't for proposed uses that will be developed in the future. This really is for redevelopment for open space infrastructure that's already existing. I think there's a lot of legitimate reasons why infrastructure might need to shift as a large community develops that are completely legitimate, and I think the city has resources and processes in place to handle those requests. We are seeking additional understanding in regards to when a development agreement or CCNRs contemplate a shift in use over time, and want to make sure that this new process that is put in place doesn't interfere with those rights and those already predetermined and agreed-upon processes. So we'll continue to engage with staff on that, and appreciate your time tonight in consideration of the ordinance.
Thank you. I appreciate you staying here all night with us. Good evening.
Good evening again. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Stephanie Allen, 1980 Festival Plaza here on behalf of the three property owners for what's known as the former Badlands Golf Course. We're here tonight in opposition to this ordinance for a number of reasons. First of all, we think that the intent behind it is directed primarily at this one property, which is an unconstitutional ordinance when you direct it at one individual property. I'm not sure how much the city's looked at the scope of how this would apply to golf courses or former golf courses. We very well may be the only golf course that can develop, or former golf course that can develop at this point because of restrictions like CCNRs, and one that has existing zoning on the property. So we feel it's a discriminatory ordinance. We'd like a little bit more time to consider the impacts on our property, as well as whether it even applies to any other former existing golf courses in the long run. It's also vague. It's not clear who it's intended for or who it would apply to, so we feel like the language is overly vague. The stakeholder input sessions, my client did participate in those. My understanding is there were only three property owners that participated. There was only one HOA that participated, so I'm not sure why that's the case. There was only one HOA that participated, so I'm not sure why that's the case, but it's an awfully small sampling of property owners that could be impacted and affected by this, whoever that group may be. Also, the piecemeal aspect of it is a concern, the fact that there's this initial piece and then there's a piece to come that we don't know what that piece is, is concerning. It'd be nice to know exactly how this is going to ultimately impact our property or other properties moving forward. And finally, you know, as I stated or tried to state earlier on the record, every time there's a delay on projects, whether it be our clients' projects or other projects that are overly burdensome, it's a real prejudice to people and it's a real prejudice to developers and property owners. Monetarily, there's carrying costs, there's interest on properties, and every time something new is added or some new delay is added, that costs developers and property owners in the city of Las Vegas money and discourages development in the city of Las Vegas. So, we're opposed to it. We would ask you to hold it. We'd like to look into it a little bit further and understand whether it does just apply to us or if there are other properties that in reality it really would apply to. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, turn this over to the Planning Commission for discussion and possible action, starting with Commissioner DeSalvio.
I would have to say that I agree just due to the fact that I think it's painted with a very broad brush, and I think it's in its infancy state. We're heading down the right path, for sure, without a doubt, so at least the homeowners know what would be coming down the pipe should it go from a golf course or a park and want to be something else. But to me, how does it, it's the word "open space or." And if you look, I'm not even sure what page it's text requirement number three, it says it's required for an open space or golf course. Well, what happens to a person that has, say, an open space of two acres? Are they going to be subjected to all these public meetings and all these reviews and for somebody, and competing against somebody that's got to go through that that's got 249 acres? I think that's just unfair at this point in time. I think it still needs to be vetted to the point where we should, we're either going to say it's got to be a certain amount of acreage falls under this criteria, and if you're above that, then you're in this criteria, or some way should perform, because I don't want to disenfranchise somebody that has an acre or two that's considered open space and then they're subjected to go through something that somebody would have to do that had 249 acres that affected many more lives than that two acres. So, for that, I can't support it until we at least kind of tighten it up.
Thank you for your comments, and I kind of agree. I mean, I don't, I think it needs to be tightened up a bit, and I don't think that this is, well, I would hope this isn't just for one project.
This is not just, I was part of the group that we, and as was Commissioner DeSalvio, this was not intended to affect any one property in particular. There is a number of different open space requirements involving multiple developments within this community as well as multiple golf courses. So, and that was one thing that we told the committee is don't focus on one project. This was designed in order to give homeowners some advance notice as to some repurposing of open space. I was trying to ask the director if they did a report prior to the committee to determine the number of open spaces and number of golf courses this could affect. This in no means was affecting any one particular project. And I think Commissioner Roush can agree that I said on a number of occasions, this is not involving any one particular project. So, let's put that...
Okay, if I can go ahead and continue my comments, and thank you for that. But I wouldn't say this coming in at this time when we're voting on a particular project that we've been looking at for a couple of years now. I mean, reading this, looks like about $150,000, $200,000, you know, studied and, you know, review process that you'd have to go through. And whenever I was reading this, I was thinking of the project that we've been thinking about so much at hand, and I just think that the majority of this stuff has, I mean, this is coming in after a project has already been submitted, and the majority of these items have already taken place on that particular, the project that we were going to, supposed to have heard tonight. So, I mean, I wouldn't mind holding this, you know, for 30 days so we can look at it a little bit further and really understand it a little bit better and let the other stuff that Mr. Summerfield is going to be bringing forward to us, review that in conjunction. So, anyways, Commissioner Roush?
Sure. I'd like to hear from a couple of the commissioners that have been on the Planning Commission during this couple-of-year process where they have been hearing this item because I really value your opinions, too, and I think that your input would be valuable for the policy group to hear and for staff to hear in terms of, you know, what you think is important to have happen. But meanwhile, I did want to point out, and Commissioner DeSalvio and I did talk about this, that there does need to be a vehicle, I think, for different-sized properties to have different treatment. It's not fair for there to be three meetings for a two-acre property, whereas the scope of a larger property, use, for example, if something were to happen with the lakes, and the lakes right now have a lot of water, or desert shores have a lot of water, but we live in a drought city. And if Lake Mead continues to drop, and I don't know what will happen, God forbid, but if something were to happen, and we've seen crazier things, they have to do something with that space. What if they sell it? There's going to have to be a policy for that. So, we have an opportunity here to create something really special where we create a policy that guides and informs our city and staff and commissioners and council members as to best practices in redeveloping those types of properties in a balanced and fair way that the community and our city as a whole and maybe hopefully the country can look to as an example as to how to make these tough decisions, and they are extremely tough decisions. So, I agree with Commissioner DeSalvio that there needs to be a tranching process possibly for maybe the type and the size of the property, but that's something that I think is better left to the next phase of these meetings, which is going to be the land use. This vote today was anticipated, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Summerfield, only on the public engagement process itself and what to happen there. Although, to your point, and respectfully so, Commissioner DeSalvio, we don't really want to put a small operator through this number of meetings. So, you know, I'd like to hear what some of the other commissioners have to say, and then I'd be ready to vote on it as well.
Commissioner Toussaint?
I don't think we're, I don't think it's there yet. I don't think we're at a place in time where we can say yea or nay. I do believe we need to hold this. But when you're talking about public space and Commissioner Roush said the lakes or desert shores, now that property is actually owned by the HOA, so that's different. It's not like a golf course or another entity where the HOA doesn't own that. So, I think we have to be very careful proceeding forward, the wording that we use to make sure that we are as fair as possible and not unfair to other properties. So, I don't think we're there yet. I, my recommendation is we hold this.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Commissioner...
Hi. It just seems as though we're really getting this and now we're just discussing it, you know, for those that were not on the committee. It's a lot to understand. I don't, there's a lot of questions and not a lot of answers, and there's a lot more questions that I'm sure we're, I'm going to have. And I think we need to have staff do a somewhat of a debrief with select, you know, in small groups, not to break the open meeting law, to better understand what this is. Because to get it now, and we do this, you know, it's 11:25 at night, there's a lot going on, it's a long day, and these have very, you know, very strong ramifications, potentially, right? I mean, it's going to go to council, but I think it's going to have strong ramifications of what we do, and I think we need to be able to digest this a little bit better in a more conducive setting as well.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Cherry?
Through the chair, I agree. I did sit on the policy board. I attended the first meeting, wasn't able to make the second one because of my surgery. It's something where there does need to be some type of vehicle, a clear vehicle. I feel like we have one component, kind of one spoke on the wheel. We need to see the rest of it and then start looking at those different-sized lots and how they're affected. And, you know, while we sit in the policy meeting, we feel like there's, there was a lot accomplished, but quickly in this meeting, we can hear a public comment that brings up great concern or, and then commissioners bring up great concern. So, I think it should be obeyed as well.
All right. So, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I would, and with all respect to the Planning Commission and their prerogative, I would just be remiss if I didn't mention, we did present on this to the City Council just last week at their December 6 meeting, and if at all possible, based on the direction we received there, we would like to get a vote today so that we can move it forward for their actual consideration of a potential bill. So, I just put that out there that...
I appreciate that, but, I mean, what I'm hearing from the entire Planning Commission is that they want to hold it in advance. I hadn't heard of one person that said they wanted to move it forward. So, I'm open to whatever anybody wants to do.
But also, Mr. Chair, through you, I think within, with that advance, within that, the next 30 days or so, we need to meet with staff to try to better understand. I don't know how it was presented to council, and I don't understand. You brought up another somewhat interesting dynamic. It went to council, that was back to us, and then it's got to go back to council. I'm confused on that aspect of it as well. If it was at council, why didn't council do something with it? Why did it come back to us? I understand that, but it's just a lot of questions that I have, and I don't understand the procedure of exactly what we're trying to accomplish.
Mr. Chairman, Councilman, I think that the council meeting, when the presentation was made, it was just to get direction from council, and I think that's the direction that led to this particular report here. So, it was just to get direction, not to get an up or down vote from council.
All right. So, some of this leading, I was saying... I mean, through the chair, I feel like we're a recommending body to the council, you know, and I don't know if these particular issues were discussed with the council or came up at that time because I'm not hearing them brought forward by anybody but the public and then fellow commissioners. So, I'm prepared to make a motion to obey item number 67, text amendment 72042.
Questions? Questions on the floor, please cast your vote.
To the, excuse me, to the next Planning Commission meeting in January 9, I believe, is 2018.
Night. Questions on the floor, please cast your vote.
Moving on to item 69, DIR 71747, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request for the election of the 2018 Planning Commission officers. Staff has no recommendation. I think we typically go to vice chair first, so nominations?
Is this, Chairman, is this for the position of vice chair?
Vice chair.
I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about, I thought you were directing the vice chair to make a nomination.
No. I misunderstood your... I'm directing all commissioners to make nominations.
All commissioners to speak up. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Quinn for vice chair this year, and I'd like to nominate Vice Chair Cherry to be, oh, one at a time.
We'll take one at a time.
My apologies.
Okay. All right. So, there's a nomination for Vice Commissioner Quinn for vice chair. Can we get a motion?
I thought I made a motion. I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, there's a nomination, not a motion.
Did I make a motion? I think I made a, I'm getting tired, so I may be...
There should be any additional nominations, Chair?
Any additional nominations? Seeing none, can we have a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve Commissioner Roush, no. Commissioner Quinn. You were talking, so I wanted to get your attention.
She heard that.
Commissioner Quinn as vice chair of the Planning Commission for the 2018 calendar year.
Thank you. And moving on to the chair position. Oh. Sure. Yes, we'll vote. Okay. Commissioner Roush, would you like to make a motion for, or a nomination?
I would like to nominate Vice Chair Cherry to be Chair Cherry for the 2018 commission.
All right. So, there's a nomination on the floor. Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close nominations and ask for a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Vice Chair Cherry to be Chair Cherry for the 2018 Planning Commission year and that we name a new cocktail, Chair Cherry.
All right.
You can leave last part off for the record.
There's a motion on the floor to appoint Vice Chair Cherry to Chair Cherry.
We'll see what happens.
Please cast your vote.
See what happens.
Please cast your votes.
Commissioner Quinn.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hold on. Oh, wait, I did. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Have you voted no?
Yeah, just see how it go.
I really didn't want it anyway. I was going to do that, too. But I, my friend.
Okay. So, moving on to sentence participation. Item number 70, sentence participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited matters within jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject as well as amount of time in single speakers loud may be limited. Anyone wanting to be heard? Seeing none. I just want to go ahead and, I just want to go ahead and congratulate Vice Chair Quinn and Chair Cherry.
Thank you. And through the chair, I hope I can serve the chair well. Thank you.
And the thing that I'm most excited about is Vicki Quinn gets to chair the next meeting on Badlands. So, thank you for taking that position.
Why do I get to chair?
All right. This meeting's adjourned.